Good evening. I'd like to call this November 14th, 2023, School Board Regular Meeting to Order. Ms. Goodell, could you please take the role?
Yes, Dr. Anderson?
Here.
Dr. Dimick? She's not here. Ms. Downs?
Here.
Dr. Gould?
Here.
Dr. Ortiz?
Here.
Ms. Silverman?
Here.
And Ms. Tice?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we say the pledge, sorry Vice Chair Gold, I actually went out of order, we needed to approve Dr. Dimick's participation via electronic means this evening. She's actually going to be joining us in a few minutes. She's out of town and on personal matters, but she is caught in traffic, so she will be joining us momentarily. So I'd like to, in accordance with Policy BDD, I'd like to move that the Board approved the participation of School Board member Susan Dimick by remote access to the School Board meeting due to a personal matter, specifically traveling for a family event. If I could have a second, please? Thank you. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed say no? Thank you. Motion carries. My apologies for going out of order on that one, Ms. Goodell. Okay, now we're at 1.04. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are at 1.05, Adoption of the Agenda. If I could have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda? Yes, Vice Chair Gold?
I move that the Board adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Could I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Silverman. All those in favor say yes? Yes. All those opposed say no? Thank you. Motion carries. And before we kick off, I just wanted to say, have, I guess, offer a brief congratulations. We had elections in the City of Falls Church just recently, and congratulations, Dr. Jared Anderson, on your reelection. And also wanted to congratulate Ms. Amy Murphy and Ms. Bethany Henderson, who have also been elected as new School Board members. And they will just, people, I think, sometimes get confused. Dr. Dimick and I, our terms go till December 31st, and then we'll be rolling off, and Ms. Henderson and Ms. Murphy will begin their terms in January. Okay, we're now at 2.01, Resource Management and Continuous Improvement. Spotlight Team FCCPS, and Dr. Noonan, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Chair Downs. Good evening, everybody. Great to see you. Tonight wraps up our fifth video in the series around the new strategic plan that we implemented last year and launched. Tonight's focus area is on continuous improvement and resource management. Over the course of the next year, year and a half, we will continue to update you, but maybe in different ways. This was our first attempt to educate the community on some of the work that we're doing relative to the strategic plan. So I want to thank in advance Paul Swanson. Dr. Swanson was responsible for helping pull this video together like the last few. And tonight, this is a nice little montage of information for you. So take it away there, Mr. Brett.
Resource Management and Continuous Improvement is one of the focus areas in Falls Church City Public Schools Strategic Plan. It's really important that we're transparent in how we're allocating resources, that our resources are aligned with our priorities and goals, and that we're continually looking at how can we invest the resources we have to achieve better outcomes. All of us at Falls Church City Public Schools are lifelong learners, so resource management and continuous improvement are key to our success.
When we think about that focus area of resource management and continuous improvement, we need to have substantial evidence to show whether or not we are, in fact, improving. So for each one of the 14 key actions in the strategic plan, we wrote a series of performance indicators. These are descriptions of what success in that particular key action might look like. And all of those things can be found on our website, so that at any given time, anybody in our community or within the division can take a look and see exactly how we're faring relative to the kind of progress that we're making.
So one of our larger undertakings this year at Falls Church City Public Schools was the beginning, the installation of our solar panel project. The reason this is important for the city is it's going to bring us closer to our sustainable energy goals that are in our very near future, within the next 10 to 15 years. As you can see, they're about 80% done on the main roof. They've already started putting the bases on the lower roofs. By the end of the week, they hope to have all the modules in place and start hooking up the electricity, and then we'll be go from there.
When I see the School Board investing money in our school, in our athletic fields, it makes me feel like the School Board is really investing in us, the students, and it makes me proud to be a Mustang.
One of the big changes here at Oak Street happens to be our new entrance, the ramp and the new steps. It's a huge thing for the whole diversity, equity, inclusion of students that have mobility issues, parents, grandparents, community members. It's allowed them to be able to enter in the front door like everybody else has the opportunity to do.
So this past spring is part of our resource management improvement across the division. In the Communications Department, we've added website interrupts to all of the pages on all of our websites across the division. They are these orange buttons, little tabs on the right-hand side. And if you find a problem or have a suggestion for a webpage, we want you to click on that. It opens a brief survey that will take only one minute to fill out, where you can report an issue, make a suggestion, give us a compliment, or provide other information that would help us in improving the webpage that you're on. Once you've sent off the form, it goes to all of the webmasters for all of our schools plus here in the division, and we can take action immediately to improve that webpage that you were on. Also, in addition, once every 30 days, if you're on a website and as you get ready to leave that website, there will be another interrupt that pops up and says, "Help us improve. Would you be willing to answer a few questions about your experience?" And this launches into a very similar form that gives us contact information. If you're looking for the school calendar, job openings, registration information, whatever, this also helps us help you in finding things on our website.
So this year, we have installed a program called Securely. Securely is actually three different programs. First, it is a filter that all FCCPS devices now use. This gives administrators quick access to web traffic that is flagged. The second is Securely Home. This is an application that gives parents, that helps parents manage FCCPS devices while they are at home. This management includes internet activity, setting time limits, et cetera. The third is Dyno Secured Classroom. This is a program that manages student engagement while they are in the classroom.
Some of the improvements that we're trying to do here at FCCPS, as far as our registration goes, is to roll it out earlier. In previous years, we've rolled it out closer to summer, which is a little bit more of a hectic time for parents. So doing it in March is a good opportunity for parents to prepare for a registration as far as paperwork or what needs to be done online in order to get kids enrolled sooner rather than later. And that helps the school system tremendously as we plan ahead for the year.
So about 18 months ago, the treasurer of Falls Church City decided to put out a request for proposal for banking services. She had a good result. She contracted with a company to process these proposals. And we feel very strongly that the best proposal won, and we are now with JP Morgan Chase. It's been a good transition. We're excited about it on a number of fronts. And some of the key service areas that we're either utilizing or looking forward to utilizing is the remote check deposit for our finance assistance, the availability for all of our staff related to banking to actually have a login to JP Morgan Chase, and they can have that live searchability within the bank software. They also have a lot of potential for us for online banking services for ACH and other types of payment methods. So we're really excited about the change. It has a lot of potential.
So in addition to the taxpayer funds, we also receive, well, Falls Church City Public School receives non-taxpayer funds, which the community and other FCEF grants come in, and within that, Finance manages the money, which is audited yearly. And auditors have found in a couple of years, past couple of years, there was nothing to be found that we are managing the money very well. That shows the community that everything's being taken care of by Falls Church City Public School employees and Finance.
Any school system anywhere in the United States and worldwide is subject to finite resources, you know, would that it were not so, but the reality is, time and money are not endless. And so any division, as it seeks to get the very best outcome that it can for kids, has to recognize that we need to manage limited resources effectively and appropriately, so that we can get the biggest bang for our buck. And I think by any meaningful measure here in Falls Church, there is a lot of evidence to suggest that we are doing just that.
Thank you so much for that very informative video. And Mr. Brett, I'm sure you are the person behind all of this, and it was terrific and very informative. And Dr. Noonan, I often say that, I've said many times, that, you know, this really revolves around a lot of our operations staff. And I often say that, you know, our operations staff are really our unsung heroes. I think a lot of people in the community don't even put names with faces. Everything runs so smoothly in this division. And so it's sort of taken for granted. And I think this would be something that I know Mr. Brett would highlight this tomorrow in morning announcements as part of the agenda, but I'm wondering if we just pull it out and actually do its own little, highlight it, because I just think it would be, it's so informative, you know, just in terms of what you talked about with the website and how people can offer feedback, but also just to put names with faces. You know, we, this Board knows how much we rely on the amazing Krista Michael, and I just, maybe everyone wants to get their faces and names out there, but I think Mr. Fowler, there's so many people that I think they're just so integral to making the system run. So I would love to see that really highlighted if we could.
Yeah, thanks. Perhaps we can put all five back together again at some point in the next week or so, and maybe not tomorrow right away, but maybe we could pull all of them together and put them out there as a packet.
Yeah, that would be great. That's a great idea.
Good.
Any questions or comments on this video? Well, thank you again. That was really, really informative. Okay, we're going to move on to now to Recognition and Reports, Section 3, and we're at 3.01. And we have the, let's put it up here, the Native American Alaska Native Heritage Month Resolution, and I'm going to go ahead and read that into the record. So this is the Falls Church City Public School Board Resolution 24-23, 2023, Native American Alaska Native Heritage Month. Whereas the month of November is recognized as Native American Alaska, I'm sorry, Native American Alaska Native Heritage Month, and whereas Falls Church City Public Schools are committed to recognizing and celebrating the diverse cultures represented in our community, staff, and students, and whereas President George H.W. Bush first recognized Native American Alaska Native Heritage Month in November 1990, whereas this month is a time to learn about the tribes, to raise a general awareness about the unique challenges Native people have faced both historically and in the present, and the ways in which tribal citizens have worked to conquer these challenges, and whereas there are 324 distinct federally recognized Native American reservations, including federal reservations and off-reservation trust land, and whereas there are 7.1 million Native American Alaska Native Heritage people in the United States as of 2020, and whereas there are currently over 142,000 Native American Alaska Native Heritage veterans of the U.S. Armed Forces, and now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board does hereby proclaim November 2023 as Native American Alaska Native Heritage Month in Falls Church City Public Schools, and urges all to respect and honor our diverse community, and celebrate and build a culture of inclusivity and equity. If I could have a motion to approve this resolution, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gold. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed say no? Thank you. Motion carries, and the resolution is adopted and approved. Okay, we're at 3.02, Stephen Fuller Institute. And, oh, there you are, Dr. Noonan.
I'm moving around on you tonight.
Keeping me on my toes.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight to share some information about enrollment, our enrollment overviews and some projections. I feel like this might be one of the more anticipated presentations that we've had in a while for a number of reasons. Certainly, as a City of Falls Church resident who recently had a community event, a lot of questions were, where are all these kids coming from, and why do we have so many students moving into our schools? And I want to preface the presentation this evening with just a little bit of information, because I think it's important for not just the School Board, but more particularly our community to understand that we are absolutely excited to see what's going on in our community with the addition of students. And we'll share some information about some student growth this year, some anticipated growth over the next couple of years and the like. And the reason that I am particularly excited is that we planned for this. And it's always nice when you plan for something and it kind of comes to fruition. Some of you might remember the long afternoons, evenings, and events as we led up to the building of the new high school, as an example. You know, Wyatt Shields and I worked hand in glove to make sure that we were able to communicate and articulate clearly how the modeling of the economics were going to work to support the payments for the debt service for the high school that would be greater capacity for our secondary students. We have updated not just the built a new high school, we have a relatively new middle school. Oak Street Elementary, just over a decade ago, got a big addition as well. One of the first things that I did when I got here seven years ago was to put a very large addition on at Mount Daniel Elementary School. And just before that, we opened Jesse Thackeray Preschool to take the preschool students off of the Mount Daniel campus and put them onto their own site. So for the last decade and a half, this Board, the superintendents, previous to me, have truly been planning for what we knew was eventually going to happen, that there would be additional growth in our schools. So with that, I want to just first share my excitement and my enthusiasm for the students that are coming. But I also, at the same time, want to give you a sense of where we are capacity-wise, because you're going to hear some numbers tonight that might set you back just for a second and say, wow, it really looks like over the next few years, we're going to see quite a growth. And so I want to just give you a sense of where we are relative to capacities in buildings. And these capacities that I'll share with you are full utilization rates. So for example, if we fully utilized all the classrooms every period of every day at Jesse Thackeray Preschool, we have a capacity of 100 at JTP. Right now, that gives us room for about 33 students of growth. At Mount Daniel Elementary, we have a capacity of 660, and right now, we have the ability to accommodate about 140 more students at Mount Daniel. At Oak Street, our capacity is 750, and I'll share all these data with you as well, 750. So we have a growth opportunity for 172 students. At Oak Street, at Henderson, our current capacity is 768, which leaves us room for 127 students. And at Meridian High School, we currently have a capacity of 1,200. But as you'll remember, we did future-proof that building, and on the fourth and the fifth floor, we have an opportunity to build out six larger spaces. So the capacity there is really 1,500 if we utilize the entire building to its fullest capacity, which gives us room for about 587 more students. So I think it's important to note that one of the things that never happens is when you see 100 students new to the system, they don't all come to second grade. They really are split across the pre-K-12 continuum. And knowing that we have capacity that can achieve that and can accommodate the growth right now is something that I think is meaningful for the community and planned for. So one might ask, well, when do we start to see some challenges? And, you know, we've got a number of different data sets that we can look at over time, but we do start to see some challenges building-wise in, based on some of the numbers that we currently are utilizing at somewhere around 2040, 2045. And at that point in time, there may need to be some modification to the CIP moving forward. But for the foreseeable future, we are in very good shape. So with that, sort of as a preface to the presentation, I'd love to share with you tonight our work around enrollment overview and projections, not just from the school system and from Weldon Cooper Center, but we're very fortunate this evening to have a guest with us that I'll introduce here in just a second. So let me just begin by saying, you know, each year, as we start the budget process, this is something that's a very important moment for us, is to look at what are the projections as we move forward into the future. We have traditionally received for the last 15 years, projections from the Weldon Cooper Center. And the Weldon Cooper Center, as you may recall, is the center at the University of Virginia that provides projections to many of the school divisions around the Commonwealth, and also to the State Department of Education and to the legislature. In fact, they are the group that state sales tax distribution is based on the data that comes from the Weldon Cooper Center. However, knowing that we have a unique circumstance and situation here in the City of Falls Church with all of the growth that's going on, the School Board, thank you very much, along with the General Government and City Council, along with my partner Wyatt Shields on the General Government side, decided to put out an RFP to get a demographer in to help us really sort through what are the numbers going to look like in the foreseeable future for the City of Falls Church schools. And as I think everybody here knows, the Stephen Fuller Institute was selected. And tonight, we have Dr. Terry Clower with us. Dr. Clower, thank you for being here, from the Stephen Fuller Institute. He is the Director for the Center for Regional Analysis, and also is the Northern Virginia Chair and University Professor at the Char School of Public Policy at George Mason University. So each year, again, these are the first steps in our budget process. So let me start with current enrollment. And you're not going to be able to probably see this on the screen, but I do want to just give you a sense of where we are. We do take enrollment after September 30th, and that is calculated as part of our fall record collection that goes to the State Department of Education. In addition to sending it to the State Department of Education, we also send those data to the Weldon Cooper Center, who then begins to develop our projections. What this chart shows you is a historical enrollment by grade level for FY '19 through FY '23, as well as the projected and actual enrollment for the school year as of September 30th. The last two columns in this chart on the right show the variance in the actual enrollment with the projections and the variance with the prior actual enrollment. So for example, the projected enrollment for kindergarten this year was 159 students, and we had 160 students enroll. So we were one more than projected, and also 27 more than we had in the prior year. Just for the good of the order, kindergarten is the hardest grade level to project, because we don't know who's going to be coming in and who's not. But overall, and I think this is the important point that I'd like to share here on this slide, is that the enrollment this year on September 30th was 2,634 students, which is 82 more than we budgeted for last year. So you might remember, our budget each year is based on a number of students. We had 82 more students this year than we budgeted for, and we also have, at the same time, 100 more students total. So we have a budgeted number, and then we have the enrollment, and we have 82 more than we budgeted for, but overall, 100 more. This chart will share some information that gives you by school, some of the enrollment. So if you look at it on the right-hand column, again, you'll see the variance with projection and the variance with prior-year actual. The summary numbers to the right, I think, are the most important here. And you'll see that at Oak Street Elementary School, at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School is where we're seeing some of our largest growth patterns that are beginning to emerge. This is another graphical way of sharing what our data looks like in terms of enrollment from 2001 to this current year. You will see the dip during 2020, '21. That is the pandemic, the pandemic year is there, and you can see us starting to begin to climb back to pre-pandemic numbers, and likely, based on what we're seeing in the data, an exceeding of those pre-pandemic numbers. So who are the students that we're serving that are coming in? And this is an interesting slide for us, because one thing we know is that students that are coming into our system that have needs that are outside of sort of a general education requirement, need some extra support, and that is a budgetary item. This particular chart indicates our multi-year history of ESOL students, or ELs, our English learners. The top section is the students who are currently receiving services. The middle section is students who have exited ESOL services, or sometimes referred to as students that are bridging. And then the last section are students who refused or declined to receive ESOL services. So these are parents of students who may already speak English with great ease, read, write, speak, and listen, and maybe came into the country but had enough education in English. So those parents have declined services. But for the students receiving services, the current year, there are 139 students, and that is 15 more than we had the prior year. But still, those numbers are below what we experienced prior to the pandemic. But it's important to know that we have 139 ESOL students. So the next chart is our student population that's broken down a little bit further by some other categories. And I think that these are important to pay attention to. You'll see our economically disadvantaged students, these are students that are considered on free and reduced lunch, has grown by 37% this year. So we're seeing larger pockets of poverty that are playing into the work that we're doing. And we know that poverty is an indicator for some need, whether it's economic support through the free and reduced lunch program, or in many cases, some additional educational need as well. Our Students with Disabilities has grown by 17 students, which is a 5% growth. Our Students with a 504 Plan, these are students that have an identified disability that may not necessarily require an IEP, and these students actually with a 504 Plan has increased by 27 students across the division, which is 15.6%. Again, you'll see that 12% increase in ESOL students. We saw a decline again in students who are homeschooling. We saw an 8% decline there. And then we did see an increase in students who are paying tuition, and this is separate and apart from those students that are paying tuition at Jesse Thackeray Preschool. So we have about 20, not about, we do have 25 students that are currently paying tuition to the City of Falls Church. So here are some prior Weldon Cooper projections that I think are important to kind of look at. Again, these are for information, and any and all information that we collect can really be useful to us. But this chart shows the projection in blue and the actual enrollment in gold for each grade level. The largest gaps between the actual and the projected enrollment were at Oak Street this year, when in past years, the greatest gap has been in kindergarten. Kindergarten, sixth grade, and grade nine are traditionally where we see students who are new to Falls Church City Public Schools, and that is because those are transition years in our division. So one might ask then, so what is the projection accuracy of these Weldon Cooper Center numbers? And this is just essentially a flat line lying on the 100% mark, showing that the year-over-year projections from Weldon Cooper have been relatively close. And another way of showing it here is by percentage. So last year, there was a difference of 2%. The year before was a negative 4%. But the range going back to 2015 is somewhere between 8.6% and negative 4%. But on average, the median is going to be, or the moat, sorry, not going to get that right. I'm just going to say average. The average is going to be pretty close to about 2.5% differential. So it's not terribly off from year to year. But there are some challenges that we'll share with you tonight, with, of course, with the Weldon Cooper Center's projections. So here are the FY '25 and beyond, and this is going to take just a little bit of explanation, not for the Board, but more for the community. And that is that each fall, after we have our September 30th data enrollment that we send to the Weldon Cooper Center, they then prepare projections for us as we move forward. Those projections are used for the upcoming budget. And again, we also use those projections as part of our capital planning process to determine whether or not we need to make adjustments to our buildings. The Weldon Cooper Center projections also help us prepare for the state allocations that we're going to see that are going to come through from, whether it's the final budget that the governor signs or other dollars that we may get. And the development of those projections use a number of different pieces of information. And the first is birth data, and the And the first is birth data, and the second is fall membership data. Birth data comes from the Virginia Center for Health Statistics and is used to project future births. And then the membership data comes from the division and the Virginia Department of Education. So we do work hand in glove with the VDOE to try to determine what our growth projections are going to look like along with those birth data. So when we, when we took it, take a look at the Weldon Cooper Center data, one of the things that you'll see is that each grade level has what's called a grade level progression ratio. And this is a little wonky, you know, if you're into statistics, for example, you might enjoy this a lot. But essentially, what these ratios begin to do is begin to capture enrollment patterns of cohorts over time as students move from grade to grade. But since this fluctuates each year, Weldon Cooper uses three sets of data for their projections. And it's one year, a year, one year from the most recent year, and then three years based on a five-year average. And that's sort of the way that they begin to look at those progressions. But the calculation is developed by dividing the number of students in a specific grade by the number of students from the previous grade in the prior year. So if a second grade student population, for example, has 100 students, it's then divided by the number of students in first grade. So if you have 100 students in first grade and 100 students in second grade, your ratio is going to be one, essentially. And that ratio, if it's, if it's one, is great. If it's greater than one, that means to us that, or greater than 100%, that means to us that we have more students that are moving into that grade than we had the prior year. If that ratio is less than one or showing less than 100%, it means that we have fewer students moving in from that prior year. So these data in this chart indicate kind of where we are in terms of ratio progressions. And if you look at the far, the very bottom, you will see by grade level kind of what our projection ratios look like. So remember, 100% is sort of a one-to-one ratio, and knowing that in kindergarten, we're at 122%, first grade 110, second 104, you can look at them all the way across, and we don't get to below 100 until we get to 10th grade and 11th grade, and then 12th grade, we jump back up to over 100, which means that in every grade level this last year, we grew with the exception of grades 10 and 11. So those are important data for us to consider as we think about our projections for the future. The next is birth rates. And Northern Virginia, I think there's been a lot of press about this recently, and, and one of the things that we have seen in the press and, and otherwise, is that in Northern Virginia, birth rates have dropped over the recent years. And even though birth rates have rebounded from 21 and 22, birth rates are still lower than they were a few years ago. Weldon Cooper Center did note that while Falls Church is one of the more attractive areas in Northern Virginia to live, I would suggest the best place to live in Northern Virginia, lower birth rates will certainly still cause enrollment to decline based on, based on their data. And here is a graphical representation of what that looks like for Falls Church specifically relative to neighboring jurisdictions. So we're the red line, and the jurisdictions around us are the blue line. So you see that we are a little bit above what's happening around us as well. But the thing that Weldon Cooper fails to recognize in their presentation of the data is the impact of local changes in our housing market. And this is where we're really excited to have a demographer help us, someone who can come in and really look at what our housing stock is going to look like for the future and really give us a sense of the direction that we need to head. Because I don't think, based on the information that is up here, for example, that currently under construction at West Falls, we have 247 units for sale in condominiums and approximately 400 units of multifamily traditional and micro apartments. The Broad and Washington Project includes multifamily rental apartments, and there's 339 units there. And Founder's Row 2, when it's completed, will have 280 multifamily rental apartments. Those are not included in the Weldon Cooper Center's data, and these are really important projects. And again, I, I want to just reiterate, we've planned for this, we're ready for it, but at the same time, the challenge for us will be not the space, the challenge will be for us getting people to fill the positions and making sure that we have the adequate budget and sufficient, more than sufficient, but adequate budget to be able to do the work that needs to be done in schools. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Clower from the Weldon Cooper Center for his comments and some further insight about how things are looking as we move towards the future. So, Dr. Clower, thank you.
Yeah, that's ahead right there.
Very good. Thank you, Superintendent Noonan. Thank you very much for having us come in, and I'm not at the Weldon Cooper Center, but I'll be happy to send them a bill for my time tonight. So that, that'll be fine, no. So just real quickly, I'm not going to spend much, the Stephen Fuller Institute, you've heard of that, and then if you've been around for a while, you've heard of the Center for Regional Analysis, and we work kind of two units, and that's all been, I'm not even sure it could be called merger, but we are two units within the same CRA, takes a little bit broader view than just the, the region, but as you know, we've been around for a long time, and we look forward to doing these kind of projects, working with local governments. I, I want to call out a couple of things. So one is that much of the work that you're seeing being reported here was done by my colleague Keith Waters, Dr. Keith Waters, he's Assistant Director. When it came to a choice, I could either teach his class until 10 o'clock tonight or come have an enjoyable conversation with you folks. So guess what? You know, Keith's teaching. The other is, I want to publicly acknowledge the support and my admiration for Kristin Michael, who has been, we've been working together on this, lots of hours spent on the phone, you know, going through the data. The other thing I'll tell you is I have done quite a number of these kind of, of projections for school districts, mostly in Texas where I come from, and this, I have never worked with a school district that has the level of detailed data available. It's a drove, it has been, and now I'm not saying you're getting a discount because of that, but I am going to say that it has been, the data that you have available allow you to do planning that is very much at the upper ends of abilities that I see in other school districts. So congratulations on that. Now let's just dig right on into it, I'm sorry, go back on one here. Our key thing that we're wanting to do here, just a little bit different as, as your superintendent suggested, is that in a, in a place where you have a relatively stable population, of course, and, you know, and let's face it, you're landlocked, the big issue is what's happening with housing development. And of course, that's a part of what we do, we work with housing developers and the Northern Virginia Association of Realtors and others. But what we wanted to do in this exercise, and this is being done for the city as well as the school district, is to look at the new housing, basically figure out what's that going to do in terms of housing supply, what population change, and then, of course, the contribution rates of those houses that we see coming in. And a few of these were mentioned in the superintendent's presentation, where you're looking at what these folks are going to get and some of these projects. So we actually talked to the developers about when these projects are actually going to come in line, and of course, there's still projections on it. It's very interesting to look at the little bit of the dynamics, but you have some big projects coming on, onboard, and we're expecting so. For example, the Founder's Row will be stabilized, at their stabilized growth at about 18 months or something like that. A couple of things we're doing, when we're looking at condo properties, we're basically assuming that they are occupied the day they are available on the marketplace because we, as you well know, we have a very tight, historically low inventory of homes for sale in this entire region, not just here. In Falls Church, the last number I have is you take all the homes on the market, and they could be sold at the rate of sales in about six days. The old tradition in real estate is a balanced market is four months. So we, we just assume that if something comes on the market, it's, it's sold immediately. What we hear from the apartment developers is if you have a fairly large apartment complex, that can take 12 to 18 months to get in because of the pace they do about qualifying people to get in and do them. And so we have allowed for that at the pace of development. Now, in the out-years, we looked at different types of elements. So single family, well, guess what? You're not going to get much more of that. You know, it's just a few dribs and drabs here or there, a few that come up that might be where a larger lot gets split out or something like that. The condos, we, we take those out as we note, and then townhomes, the city is actually, city planning department is projecting that they're expecting about six townhome units in a year. Now, this does not include anything that might happen in the future about converting existing office spaces and commercial spaces into other uses like residential. I know there is a whole lot being talked about in this region, and we do have some case studies. Keep in mind, on a nationwide basis, less than 10% of office buildings can practically be converted into residential. The floor plates are wrong, it just doesn't work, doesn't pencil out, it doesn't matter how much money you throw at it. So there's a little bit of a, of a thing about that that might be something that is a risk factor in our outer-year projections as we look and think about what do we do with obviously office buildings that are across our region that are market stressed at the moment and likely to stay that way for a long time. Whoops, I'm sorry, I went the wrong direction. There we go. So we looked at this, I'm going to just skip over this, and estimate a number of households you can kind of see, but one of the things that we have to apply to this is a vacancy rate. And our vacancy rate comes from a couple of different sources. We use for, for townhomes and condos, and we use the American Community Survey Public Use Micro Sample Data, for those of you that are true data geeks. That micro sample area is not actually just Falls Church, it includes pieces of Fairfax County, Northeast Fairfax County and Arlington North, but it seems to be a relatively reasonable section of apartments, et cetera. We are assuming that ownership units are 100, basically 100% occupied, that based on market demand, if there's a unit out there, it's going to be available. And I don't see any reason, and I see nothing in our future that would suggest that that's different. So from that, then, we want to take the, the enrollments of how, what kind of contribution rate does each household provide to the school district? And we, we have these numbers, I'm not going to, I don't think I want to go into the specifics, I'll leave it to you, you have these data and charts in your packet, and you can see some of the distributions of it. But effectively, for our out-projections, we look at two sets of numbers. One of them is that the most recent year is indicative of how things look, especially in the near term. The other is to go back and see what was happening prior to the pandemic, because as you well noted, we had that, that dip down. I think it's really interesting to see that certainly, as you might expect, the homeschooling went up that one year, but it's since kind of stabilized back, but the overall contribution rate is still below that 18 and 19 kind of year level. And quite frankly, I don't, I don't know where those kids are, to be honest with you. I don't know if they're being homeschooled, I don't know if they're in private school, that's probably some of it, but we just simply don't know for sure. I'm certainly not going to try to read that to you. My eyes aren't that good, but it's in the data. Let's just look at it from a chart. This is, you know, the chart, the picture telling a, a story a lot better. So you've got three lines up here, that bottom line is the Weldon Cooper numbers with our adjustments. Weldon Cooper actually doesn't forecast out pre-K. So we took our numbers for pre-K and added it into Weldon Cooper, so at least these lines are apples to apples in that sense of what kids that we're talking about. The orangish line there in the middle is our projections based on your last year contribution rates and then looking at the development pipeline as we are seeing it, what we already know is coming, and what the planning department has in their future land use plans for approval in the future. That gray line above it, that's the interesting shock and the risk factor. That's that same projection on housing growth, but what if you have what we call in forecasting a step function where it goes right back to that 18 to 19 contribution levels? And that gap between those is roughly about 200 kids? And you think about, start dividing that, how many more, even though it gets spread out over the different grades, that starts talking about staffing levels, and that's the one that if it, if you have that jump back, if, you know, we have this thing that we've been told, the president has told us the pandemic is over, and, but we still see people behaving a little bit differently. If they return back to 2018, 2019 behaviors, you guys could see a sudden surge in the enrollments. Now, as you've heard, you've got capacity in terms of physical capacity, facilities are not a problem, but we all know about the challenges of finding teachers. So with that, I want to go ahead and just, just close out with a couple of things and be able to, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions. I will share one other thing to you. I was doing something on a Saturday when I was looking at these data a little bit, Keith was doing his work, and he'd been working with Kristin, and just for giggles, I opened up one of these AI search engines and just said, "How many kids are in the public school system in Falls Church?" The answer I got from the brilliant AI that's going to solve all of our problems was 20,200. So only a decimal place. Now I have to figure out next year, next spring, when I'm teaching a data class, how to tell kids, "Forget what you're reading," and still go look at the data. But with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. I'll, I'll start with a question I have. So, so does, does your institute have a relationship with Weldon Cooper?
Other than, every now and then, we, we talk to each other, but we are as often competitors as we are collaborators. But, but understand, the Weldon Cooper Center is actually what's called the State Data Center.
Right.
They are, you know, they are.
Right, because it's three UVA, right.
So we, so we use it. I think what was important about this one was the one of knowing that their processes are a little bit of more traditional forecasting methods, and it just, in a community of the size of Falls Church, when you guys are reshaping the urban form of your community with new housing development to meet the population growth demands, to be able to provide housing for the local workforce, it changes that nature, and those, and those traditional methods of forecasting really become problematic.
Well, that was exactly my point. You know, I, I remember when I first came onto the school board and we were doing our first budget meeting, and we have all kinds of, Kristin Michael gives us all kinds of information, and that was always the caveat when we got that Weldon Cooper projection, that it didn't take into account upcoming construction. And when I first came on the school board, that was in January of 2020, wasn't really, you know, we didn't have that much. Now, four years later, we have a ton of things coming on. So I'm really glad that we have you here and that you're giving us a much different, I guess, a more thorough picture of what's going on.
Yeah, I don't want to distract from what they do at all. I think the Weldon Cooper numbers, you know, with their limitations.
Right, right.
It's, it's, I think, good information for you to have, but from a planning perspective, the challenge that you have in, in basically staff recruitment.
Right.
And retention, this is the big one that have just, you know, are we ready to hire an extra 10 teachers next year?
Right.
Well, gee, can you, most school districts are struggling to say, "Can I keep the ones I've got?"
Right, right. No, that is, is, we are in a critical teacher shortage. And, and not only that, you know, I think, Dr. Noonan, thank you so much for those numbers. I know Ms. Teis was looking for those numbers about the capacity of our buildings, but as you said, and I know you'll agree, it's not, it's not just the capacity of our buildings, it's also buses, you know, teachers, of course, but, you know, buses, bus drivers, you know, it's all, it's all of that. So, you know, it's great that we have the capacity, but there's so much more that's going to cost money to educate and transport and feed our children, so.
And it'll be an interesting, an interesting dance to sort of figure out as we move ahead too, because it is going to cost more to maintain the services that we have. And for us to be able to maintain those services, there may be a different level of need that comes forward. There are certainly ways around that, but it reduces the services that we provide. And, and right now, I think one of the things we do really well is we have a very relational classroom where our class numbers are staffed at a pretty low number. We've got great services with buses where we, we have a very small circle, a very small sort of ride dimension, and there are ways to save money by expanding, you know, the distances students have to walk or making class sizes larger, and I don't think that that's who we are. And so I think being able to socialize that early or in the process then later is certainly helpful.
That's right.
If I might, ma'am.
Yes, please.
One thing that I would add is that in our discussions with the city staff, they have indicated that they want us to basically extend our scope of work beyond, and we're doing other things for the city, they include the commercial properties, employment forecast and all. But into the spring, bring us back and start looking at some of the, you know, some of the assumptions, particularly about the new housing that's just coming online, this come, in 2024 especially, and we'll be, kind of take another bite at it of, you know, as we get more, will those buildings that are being projected to open in September and October next year, are they still on pace for that? And that's a really critical one for you next year, and it's not going to give you a lot of lead time, but if we can do some of that, and, and again, we're in communication with the developers, so just making sure that they're staying on target for their open dates, because I very much expect that. dates, because I very much expect that once they start selling, and they haven't, and one of the condo buildings has not opened up sales at all, they're kind of holding their powder dry a little bit on that. But as you well know, you guys accept students for people who are about to move into the area.
Yeah, no, that's great, it's great to know that, too, because, you know, I think there have been, you know, and I know our colleagues in city council, you know, they're not putting up buildings, not giving some thought to this. So, but as you said, there's a certain formula that they've been using, and so it's really good to know, like, is this really, is this formula correct? Is this working? So when Founder's Row is fully occupied, are we seeing the numbers we thought we would see? And if not, then we need to really look at these other, and just, as you said, Dr. Noonan, be better prepared, that maybe it's going to, these billions, what we thought, it's actually going to yield with more, yield more students than we, than our formula thought was going to yield. So that's what you're saying, that they're going to go back and see.
We'll take another look, we'll ask again, we, like I said, we've been in touch with the developers, you know, and they actually are, you know, even, not quickly returning our calls, but they return our calls, you know, and they, you know, and tell us, hey, this is, we don't mind sharing this, you know, they, they're being very cooperative in the sense of just sharing it. And so if we think about it, that in terms of, say, February or so, you know, we talked to them, yep, we're still on that schedule, or no, we've had some delays, you know, there's all sorts of permitting issues and stuff that go through, so now we're not thinking that we're going to be open until January. Well, that's going to be information you guys need to know with that chunk of students when they're likely to hit.
Right. And, you know, the only other thing, Dr. Noonan, that I think about, too, is, you know, it's all these sort of, I feel like in candles, these things that don't, I think, jump out at us, you know, I'm thinking that, you know, as you get more and more students, it's harder to make the school play, it's harder to make a sports team, you know? And so, I mean, those are going to be kind of the things, the student service side of things, or I guess the student life activities side of things, you know, and this doesn't involve you, but down the road, you know, is it, do we add a new sports team on, do we maybe do a third player music, you know, that sort of thing? Because I think that's going to be some of the, you know, we've always prided ourselves in being this little school system, and I think that mindset's going to have to change over the years as these numbers start to increase.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you for saying that. I, you know, you look at the out years, for example, at the high school, and we aren't going to grow so big that we'll lose that feel. You know, I often joke that I was the principal of a high school that had more students in it than we have in the city of Falls Church. And at the same time, you know, we still were able to maintain great relationships and kids found their vein of activities and approaches. So I understand what you're saying. I think we're really committed to making sure that we maintain that small-town feel, and our teachers do a really nice job of that, and our staff, but I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Silverman.
That just reminded me of something, Chair Downs. Would this influx of, not influx, but an increase in students, how does that affect our ability to change, I don't know the right words to use here, but to change our ability to play different divisions within, at high school levels, that maybe our students wouldn't have to travel as far? Maybe there might be a benefit coming out of this, too?
Yeah, every two years, they do what's called R and R, which is, it's realignment and, I want to say review and realignment, that's not exactly right, but it's something in realignment, where all of the divisions are looked at based on size. So if we do get to a bigger size, we may go up in division. So I think we're up for R and R probably next year. So if we grow by, you know, 100 or 200 students, it could potentially change sort of where we fall, but it would take quite a few students, because we're still below 1,000 at the high school. And so as long as we're still below 1,000, it's not until we get to 1,300, 1,400 at the high school that we begin to jump up to a different division.
So we're still pretty far away from that threshold?
I think so. I think we're still pretty far away. But there are also choices that we can make to play up, and that's a conversation for another day.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Yes, Dr. Ortiz.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first has to do with this year's estimates. When we go back to the variance to actuals, you noted, Dr. Noonan, that the change is most pronounced at the elementary school. And I want to know if we've sussed out the source of that enrollment projection error, you know, and not to say it was an error, I mean, it's a projection and whatnot, but like, is it, you know, are those students coming from rental units, you know, is there a higher, whatever it is, what's the name of that, generation rate or whatever?
Generation ratio.
Yeah, for those units, you know, have we figured out like kind of the source of why that's the case? Or did just more people move in and, you know, that's the way it is?
That's a great question. So two things. First is, you may recall, and for maybe the good of the community, Weldon Cooper Center gave us three projections last year that we could look at. One was sort of a most conservative estimate to one that was maybe pre-pandemic estimate, and then there was one that was sort of up the middle. And we, as I recall, took the up-the-middle plan, thinking that that was probably where we would land. Obviously, that wasn't where we landed, we landed on the pre-pandemic line more likely. But when we've gone through and looked at the student-by-dwelling unit, which is in your packet of information for this evening, what we found in the analysis is that most of the students this year are coming from single-family homes. The growth is coming from single-family homes. We don't anticipate, as was indicated, that that's going to happen every, year over year, because we do have sort of a landlocked space where there's not a lot of opportunity to build more single-family homes. What we saw, I think, over the last year is perhaps more construction with some teardown of some smaller houses, larger houses going in, three kids generate from that house where maybe there weren't any before. So we are seeing that, that's where many of the students are coming from in our analysis. Our upcoming year, and I haven't actually given you the projection that we're looking at, but I will, and I'm not trying to hide the ball, I think we just haven't completely landed on it, but I think for our purposes of planning, that we are going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of over the three-year span, including this year, and an additional 300 students over three years. So think about it in terms of 100 more students each year. We do anticipate that those students will come from the new mixed-use development, but again, we're ready for it.
Okay.
Space-wise.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Noonan.
Of course.
And then I'm looking, this is a question for the Stephen Fuller Institute. I noted that, you know, going out to 2040, I mean, I don't know if we can really, you know, I don't want to predict the future, but next year is something we have to plan for and the year afterwards. And this gets, I know that you're working on this, Dr. Noonan, but I noted from your charts that, you know, the year-over-year from the September enrollment for 2024 is plus 85, and then plus 146 again the next year, and then it levels out for a few years, maybe it's a breather, you know, maybe that'll come to pass or maybe it won't. I just want to know, you know, obviously, every time you do, whenever you do a projection, there's a kind of a band of uncertainty around that. Can you give a flavor of what the standard deviations are on that projection? Like, it's plus 85 is the mean, plus or minus 10 or something like that? Like, how tight is that projection of yours?
The methodology used here is not based on probabilistic statistics, so there is no margin of error or standard deviation calculated in this, and that's just because we are looking at the actuals data in that one. And so there, these projections are, they are assuming a fixed state going out, and then with the addition of the housing units that are in there. So this is, this was not done as a regression analysis, or, and even that, if we use something like exponential smoothing, which is a standard forecasting technique, that is actually a non-probabilistic method and does not produce a confidence interval that you would normally think about it. And in this case, quite honestly, I wouldn't, with a smaller community like Falls Church, this is the challenge that we have when we're doing housing market projections in this region. We get to even the size of Arlington, and the numbers are just all over the place, huge variations from month to month, just based on what properties happen to sell, how many are available, and all of that. And so it would be, if we had, I will tell you this, without doing a math exercise on it, the variation and the potential would be pretty high for what we're doing, and it's just off of a small base. Remember, if you guys, if you guys were a 20,000 student, we'd have a lot more confidence in what next year's numbers is, just because it would be a much more moving than, a few number of students doesn't move the needle overall. Here, a relatively small group of students really moves the needle for you guys.
Okay, so just maybe to turn my question around, if we were, if Dr. Noonan and his team were trying to come up with ranges to plan towards, it really boils down to, you know, when certain units complete as well as the generation rates?
Yeah. The way we've expressed it in the numbers that we provided, and if you don't mind, I'll put that slide back up. Oh, I'm sorry, if you don't, that's okay, I don't want to cause trouble. If we go back just a couple of slides to that chart, what I would tell you is that we're pretty, we feel, whoops, no, not going to do it, that's okay. That gray line and the orange line that were up top, not the Weldon Cooper line, that's the bound. That's, I think that's a pretty reasonable upper and lower bound, maybe it tweaks down a little bit, but I think that that is, and what's that doing is just saying we're allowing that probability of, the possibility, I should say, of having these students that disappeared after 2018, 19 reappear.
Okay, very good, thank you.
The scary part of that is the step function that was indicated, the width between that is 200 students. So I think, to your point, Dr. Ortiz, you're right. I think that's why we need to be paying very close attention to what's coming online and when, and I think being able to come back later with the Stephen Fuller Institute to look at those yield ratios to determine whether or not they were right, was the .21 year yield ratio for those mini-units right? Or was it more like a .15? Or was it a .3? I think that would be, that'll be really useful. And we'll stay, you know, one of the things that Ms. Michael and I have worked really hard to do is to, we didn't have a staff reserve in the past, but about three years ago, we put a staffing reserve into the budget so that if there was a need, we could respond to it quickly. And that's kind of what I think we're going to have to do into the future.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. Yes, Ms. Tyce.
Thank you. Dr. Noonan, you really read, was, you were reading my mind on the topic of the single-family dwelling homes and the turnover in them, and I'm wondering, you know, 2/3 of our students roughly live in single-family dwellings, and as we all see, I'm sure, in our neighborhoods, that these, you know, small ramblers with empty nesters are being torn down, and big new construction with three, four, or five kids are being, are moving in. So how is that sort of, how is that data incorporated into the projections? I know that must be.
It just winds up being a part of your current contribution rates that you see out of the single-family homes, and it's one of something that we need to see. The real issue there is how oft, I mean, we can get, you know, it's not the anecdote, but how many of those are happening, and, you know, and then the pace of those, and some of that is, you know, how much of it is, you know, the permits are issued on it. So that's certainly something that we've thought about. It's a little bit harder in this market, just because, you know, mortgage rates at 8% and a construction loan now is above 10%, so there is a little bit of market pressure pushing that down. Hopefully, for all of us, we're not going to see those kind of mortgage rates continue for much longer, but they certainly are going to stay elevated. I think some of what you're seeing in this, as much as anything, is the lack of housing supply that we have. If you're a young family living in Falls Church, and your kids are aging up into school age, and you've been in an apartment or a smaller condo, you, normally, the process would be, we're going to move up into a single-family home, a two or three, you know, three- or four-bedroom home, and simply, there's no inventory to speak of on average, right? And so I think that we're seeing some capping of what's going to happen, just because there's not a lot of movement. And then, for now, you talk about people that have those homes, say, an empty nester who is thinking about moving, are they going to want to move someplace if it's more expensive or something, and they sell out here, but, you know, do they have to take on a mortgage? I'm not sure. Of course, the other factor is, right now, part of the reason housing units are so, the inventory has dropped so much, who wants to leave a 3% mortgage?
Right. No, I understand that, I'm just, when we look at 25 years of projections, you know, I have three houses on my street, three ramblers being torn down at, like, right now, with all the signs and construction going. So how does that factor in for the long term? I mean, when it says only one or two coming on per year?
Right. And it will, it will, over time, it will make that contribution rate for that particular housing type, it will cause it to increase, and I think it will matter. I don't think it's going to be enough of a jump yet to worry about, and when I'm talking about the near term, in that I do not see that conversion rate getting enough that it says, oh, we need, instead of needing a new high school in 2040, we need one in 2030. It's not going to be that kind of numbers.
Sure, sure. Ms. Tyce, can I jump on that question? And this is for Dr. Noonan. So when I, your predecessor, when I was in a meeting, you know, a long time ago, it was said to me that one of the ways to look at that is, if you look at the number of lots in the city where the land is worth more than the houses, and that's where you figure out those are your tear downs. So I don't know, do we do any kind of keeping up with those numbers?
We do keep up with those numbers, and I asked for it last year from the general government, and I did get some information, we can go back and look at it again. I think the challenge that we're going to face picking up on this conversation is we're seeing three- and four-bedroom houses being torn down. There are two on the walk that I take with my dog every day, where these are houses, when we were in the market, I was like, oh, I wish that was on the market, we would have moved in there, and now somebody bought it and they're tearing it down. So I think that's going to be a challenge for us as well going forward. The good news there is if it's a three- or four-bedroom, that probably generated two or three kids, and if they put another two- or three-bedroom, or four-bedroom on there, or five-bedroom on there, probably the generation's pretty close. But we were able to get an inventory, and I don't know necessarily, Chair Downs, if it was exactly what you're asking for, where the house was worth less than the property, but what we were able to get was an inventory of those sort of traditional brick Cape Cod's, and how many of those were left that potentially could be taken down. So we can certainly look into it.
Be interesting, I think, to follow. Thank you. Ms. Tyce and I jumped in, did you have any other, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Well, this is our statistics guy right here, so he's, and he seems satisfied, so that's kudos to you, so. Anyone else?
I would just like to make one last comment.
Yes, please, please.
And since Kristen is on here, this is really Kristen's presentation this evening, so thank you so much for pulling this together, Ms. Michael. Unfortunately, she has coughed, so I drew the straw tonight and got to present Kristen's work. So thank you for pulling it all together, Kristen.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Noonan. I always remiss Ms. Michael in not thanking you, because I heard that you've worked really hard on this, as you always do. So thank you so much for your work on this. And Dr. Dimick, are you good? Any questions from you?
I guess if I could ask one question, this is perhaps more for Dr. Noonan, could you remind us, is it next, we have to decide on a number before you build the budget. Am I remembering that correctly? And my guess is that that is before we would have any sort of updated information in the new year from what is happening with the new buildings?
That is correct. We will land on a number by our December 4 date with our counterparts, and we're going to use the data that's been shared with you tonight to determine what that is. The good news is, it's a projection, it's not the, this is exactly how many kids are going to come, but it does give us a good sense of what things are going to look like based on the inventory that's coming online.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you so much. We're happy that you skipped the class and come and presented to us, it's very informative, and I know we were all waiting anxiously or with great anticipation for this presentation. So thank you very much, it was really helpful for all of us, especially as we get ready for budget season. Thank you. Ms. Michael, thank you again for all that work, I know you did behind the scenes, and we hope you feel better. Okay. We are now at Section 4, Public Comments and Requests. In accordance with School Board Policy BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. And Ms. Goodall, I do not believe we have any speakers this evening, is that right?
No, we do not have speakers, but we did have three written public comments for the record.
Okay, thank you. Three written comments for the record. Thank you so much. Okay, we're now at 5.01, closed meeting. Someone could read us into closed? Dr. Dimick, do you want to read us into closed? Kate gestured, I mean, Vice Chair Gold gestured, so, to the zoom, to the screen. You only have a few more left of these. You'll have a few more left of these. Can't she do it?
I can do it.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Anderson, go do it.
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change in position, staff separation, dependent care leave, long-term medical leave, childcare leave requests and leave absence, and student matters under Section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, student residency.
Thank you. Could I have a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Gould. All those in favor say yes. Yes. All those opposed say no. Thank you. Motion carries. We'll move into closed, 10 minutes or so, you think?
Maybe the shortest one on record.
Okay. I like the sounds of that.
Up to you.
All right. We'll be back. Thank you.
Dr. Noonan, will you be creating another Zoom link for closed?
No, I don't. Oh, yeah, I guess we need to for two. Dr. Dimmick, I will invite you to a Zoom session when we get into the room.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay, welcome back. We're at 5.03. We're going to reconvene to open. If someone could make a motion to reconvene to open.
Chair, I move that we reconvene to open.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. All those in favor say yes. Yes. All those opposed say no. Thank you. Motion carries. We're at, God bless you, Ms. Silverman. We're at 6.01, certify the closed meeting. Dr. Dimmick, you have your headphones, your AirPods. Are you ready?
Sure.
Okay.
Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Tice. Ms. Goodell, could you please take the role?
Yes. Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimmick?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Dr. Gould?
Yes.
Dr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Ms. Silverman?
Yes.
And Ms. Tice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now at the consent agenda, and you'll see we have personnel items, advisory committee appointments, extended daycare advisory committee charge, and that's our consent agenda. We're at 7.04. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent and seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. Okay, we're now going to go on to 8.01, school start times and early release Wednesdays. And I'll just get us started this evening to sort of give some background and context to where we are in this process for those listening in tonight. We began this discussion in the spring, and the reason that these two topics have come to the school board is, the first is early release came to us because we had, over the years, we had heard from parents sending us letters that could we reexamine early release, that surrounding school systems no longer had it, and working parents find it difficult to navigate. And so knowing that it has been tough on some parents, but on the flip side, knowing that it's also a great benefit for our teachers because they use it for, they use early release Wednesdays for professional development and meetings, not just grade-wise, which what happens on a regular basis during planning time. What's different about early release Wednesdays is they can meet vertically, so they can meet across grade levels. So, you know, looking at, there are two sides to this piece. We thought it was really worth exploring, and I know Ms. Silverman officially brought it as an, suggested it as an agenda item a while back. So we began that discussion in spring, and along with that topic, we also began talking about looking at starting the secondary campus later. And that, the reason we began talking about that was the Health and Wellness Committee, which is a school board advisory committee, brought that to our attention and cited a lot of research, particularly from the Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics, that an 8:30 start time was really the gold standard for secondary campus. So that's why both of these topics came on our radar. We began discussing them in the spring, and we decided to wait until the fall, and that's where we are in the process right now. We've had 10 town halls, and we've met with parents at several different locations, including during the weekend at the community center. We've met with staff from each school. We have also had a student town hall and an ESOL, sorry, a town hall with our English Language Learning Community. And so I wanted to just, the town hall with the students as well as our ESOL town hall happened after our last meeting, so we did want to do a quick summary of that. And I did want to thank our student rep, Sean Lewin, and Vice Chair Gould. They worked behind the scenes to get that, get the student town hall organized. And I know unfortunately, Mr. Lewin was ill the day we did that town hall, but I did want to just do a very high-level summary of that meeting with the students. And we really primarily talked about start times and starting the school day at 8:30. And generally, there was support. I think we heard from a lot of students about it affecting after-school activities, particularly athletics, and, you know, if students are in band or plays, that sort of thing. I did remind the students, and because when we brought up this topic in the spring, we had talked about an 8:30 start and a 3:30 end, which I think was, would be difficult for athletics and difficult for any kind of, you know, any, really, any after-school activity for a number of reasons. And so since that time, and I did let the students know that what we were really considering this time around was an 8:30 start time with a 3:10 end time, and that would mean a 15-minute shorter day. The 3:10 end time does, does not impact activities as much. It is just a 10-minute difference from the current 3 o'clock. Those, and I did explain to the students that those 15 minutes would really be, how those 15 minutes are carved out of the day would really be determined by Mr. Laub, and I'm sure he'll ask for feedback from the students. The students were very clear that they did not want any time taken out of Mustang Block. That was their number-one priority. Several students talked about not wanting it to be carved out of academics either, but I think we heard loud and clear from many students that they did not want Mustang Block affected. And for those who aren't aware, Mustang Block is something that students can use for student organization meetings. They can go meet with teachers and get extra help. It's just really a great resource for students. They can do homeworks. It's just a lot of, it's a very flexible time for students, and they value that. And another theme that came up during that meeting was with the students is that they wanted to be sure that coaches, you know, wanted to be sure that coaches, you know, if we were to start at 8:30, that they wouldn't all of a sudden see more and more teams practicing before school because school is starting later. So, I don't know if anyone, and I'll open up, if anyone in the school board had any, did any other themes come out that I didn't mention? If anyone has anything? Okay. Mr. Lewin, did you want to add anything?
A lot of what I have written down echoes a lot of what you just mentioned, but I think, as we all know, the mental health and well-being of students is crucial to their success in and out of the classroom. And by having these additional short Wednesdays every month, students would have more time to take care of themselves and de-stress from the stressful school week. This would ultimately lead to a more successful and productive student body. And personally, some of my happiest memories from, in terms of social engagement, were a result of these short Wednesdays. Getting to walk home with friends, get outside, socialize, and form these critical connections that would persist throughout my time at the secondary campus is something that I would love to amplify by adding additional short Wednesdays. And I've heard from students that as far as the start times for the secondary campus, while the student body is relatively split on whether or not that they would want to change the start times, I believe that the emphasis for students is again placed on the end times of the school days remaining at a constant. As you've more than likely been informed in community town hall discussions and through parent advocacy, I've also been informed by my own peers that this is specifically important for the secondary campus where students play competitive sports or have demanding extracurriculars that involve communal groups that prefer to begin their activities immediately following 3:00 p.m. But in general, by keeping the current end time or something very close to it, like 3:10, we ensure that students have enough time to participate in their extracurriculars without sacrificing their own academic success. So, yeah, I think it's very similar to what you were already talking about, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewin. And so, just to be clear, I focus more on start times. So, in terms of early release Wednesdays, you're advocating for additional early releases, is that right?
Yeah, that seems to be like the absolute overwhelming answer I've gotten from students. I think it's just like a very, like, students, it's like a goalpost that they just look forward to, and it's just like, it's something that they feel as though they can use to their own advantage to plan for their own academic success in a more beneficial way. Like, I know so many students go to the libraries on short Wednesdays and study for upcoming exams or things of that nature, or they meet with clubs. I know for, when I was in, like, theater productions, we used those to our advantage, and we had longer rehearsals as our production came up to a closer date. But, and also in terms of teachers, I think students, I've heard, they've expressed the notion that they would like teachers to have more, like, time to plan, especially when it comes to these higher-level IB courses. They feel giving these teachers this longer period of time to plan for these lessons and these upcoming exams and things of that nature allows them to have a better education and preparation for themselves as students. And yeah, just giving the teachers more time to grade assignments and give students feedback at a quicker rate is also very helpful, and I've experienced just long delays as a student just because teachers are kind of overwhelmed by these, like, very demanding curriculum that the IB provides for them. But I think they focus more on how they would benefit in terms of early release Wednesdays, but I've heard a few comments on how they would feel as their teachers could benefit and then in turn reflect and give them more benefits as well.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Lewin. Any questions or comments for our student rep? Okay, thank you very much. And then the next piece is I wanted, I asked Vice Chair Gould, he was able to attend. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but the community forum with our families with, who are English language learners, so if you wanted to talk about that.
Yes, I can. And I'm going to also rely on Dr. Anderson, who was in attendance, and also Dr. David Ortiz, who provided most of the translation for the event, along with our former school board member, Dr. Sonia Ruiz Bolanos, who was very helpful in organizing and outreach. The feedback that we heard specifically on early release Wednesday, early release Wednesdays are difficult for those families as expected from a planning. There was, the feedback that we received was the inconsistency from their perspective about when those are scheduled. It's difficult for them to know. There used to be a text chain with the parent liaison about when those happen, and that hasn't seemed to be happening, so it's difficult for them to know when those are happening. That was one of the feedbacks on early release Wednesday. They also talked about the bus pickup. They said if there was going to be childcare options, ideally that bus pickup would happen. It would be difficult for traveling to the school to pick up their kids. We did have a number, I should say, we did have a number of families turn out, so it was great, and a lot of enthusiasm. Some of the other feedback that we got, we asked about the alignment of secondary with the elementary to make sure if that's lined up. And interestingly, the feedback that we got, that is not a priority. The pickup was the childcare option that at least the families that came, there's usually a parent that picks up three or four kids. It's not the secondary siblings that are taken care of, so that wasn't a priority. The feedback that, around all of this was, for childcare options, if we were going to run the childcare options, we talked about different models, and they all wholly recommended, I'm looking at Dr. Ortiz here, to have the registration for childcare happen when you register for school, for classes, or for schools. They said it would be very difficult for families to know how to register for any options outside of that registration window, and they pointed to, and Dr. Lewin probably know best, they pointed to, I think there was a registration event at some of the apartments, and they said that was very helpful for not knowing just what school, but also the different activities and things like that. Finally, we asked about different communication around how this could work in terms of getting connections, and overwhelmingly, they said a significant number of messages are not in Spanish, and so it's hard to understand what's going on. We showed, we talked about like PTA and a lot of the PTA events. There was one parent that was on the PTA, but most of the PTA announcements are not in Spanish, so it was hard to understand what activities we're going through. Text messages are not mostly in Spanish, so what they rely on is the parent liaison to have that connection or that communication. And obviously, a lot of their, they said their emails are tough, the number of emails that are not in Spanish to keep up with what's going on. So, I will turn to Dr. Ortiz to add. I'm sure I missed some since he was the translator.
So, I think, let me offer a couple of kind of bottom line items. Thank you for all of that. One is that fundamentally, early release Wednesdays are profoundly difficult for these families in terms of managing childcare as well as just sorting out the details of it because, you know, there is a little bit of inconsistency here and there with that. And so, I think it's, in aggregate, a tremendous burden. And then furthermore, I think a lot of, there's, so that's one regarding this particular topic. And then generally speaking, there's a tremendous need for, I'll just call them like retail services to keep things moving along, both in terms of communication as well as in assistance with navigating various aspects of the schools. That goes, you know, anything from registration to working with counselors to even sorting out IB issues, you know, which is tough enough, I think, for every family that's had to do it in English and have to do it and work through that in another language is tremendously difficult. So, those are two different things, but any kind of activity or anything, any solution would have to take into account the extra additional transaction requirements that would be needed to support those families.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Gould and Dr. Ortiz. Thank you again for hosting that town hall and for the summary. So, just to remind those who are listening that we did develop a timeline, and in that original timeline, we talked about making a decision in November. And so, after talking to the school board members, it does seem that four of us are aligned on both early release and start times. However, there are three members that are still, have some questions and other suggestions for consideration. So, I just, I wanted to put that out there that we won't be making any kind of decision, definitive decision this evening. We're going to have another discussion tonight, but we're going to keep the discussion tonight more high-level. At our last meeting, we went into very great detail about all the different feedback we received from all the different town halls and the emails, and so we're not going to go over that all again tonight. And I encourage community members to watch that discussion. It was our last meeting. They can watch it on our YouTube channel, so if they do want to watch that. But for tonight, we're going to really talk about where each of us is in our decision-making process. And so, I am going to just, I don't usually kick it off, but I am going to kick it off, and then we'll have, everyone will have a time to give their thoughts. So, in terms of start times, I do think, and this is me speaking personally, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, an 8:30 start time and a 3:10 end time at the secondary level makes sense to me. It does give our students some extra time to sleep in. I don't think a 10-minute later end time impacts, will impact after-school activities very much. You know, I'd just like to, I know that the 15 minutes that is going to be pulled out of the day would just suggest that maybe we look at passing times or maybe stable group, but that's, of course, being left to the principals. In terms of early release, obviously, this is a tougher one, and, you know, I have to say, I was somewhat surprised. We did not get a whole, a lot of emails, and I did correspond with some parents who felt like, you know, they, it was hard for them maybe when they went, they didn't go to the town halls because that was a little bit maybe intimidating to say they did not support early release Wednesdays. But on the other hand, you know, we just have not received many emails from community members who asked us to do away with them, and at least not in great number. So, you know, during these meetings, it really, I think what was, what really came clear to me, became clear to me is that the teachers obviously really valued these early release Wednesdays between the professional development. And again, not just meeting grade-wise level, but meeting vertically, so with all the different grades can meet together. I know that we, Dr. Gould and I, after meeting with Mount Daniel, a parent came out and talked to us and said that if, early release Wednesday is really the only time that he's able to talk with teachers about his special education students, because as a parent, he doesn't have planning time, and this is really it. If we were to take early release Wednesdays away, he wouldn't have that time. And I did, I'm sorry, this is a little disorganized, but I did just recently attend the Special Education Advisory Committee, and Ms. Tice couldn't attend that evening. And I will say that the advisory committee, though they acknowledge it's difficult sometimes for parents who have children's with special needs to find childcare, they were so supportive of the teachers and the special education teachers and were very concerned as a group about getting rid of early release Wednesdays because that is really when a lot of special education support work happens in terms of IEP meetings. And so, I did want to throw that out there. I'm sorry, I should have done it earlier in this conversation, but as a group, they were concerned about, you know, losing the early release Wednesdays and not having that support for special education teachers. So, a couple of other things, and I'll wrap it up and pass it on to whoever wants to talk next. The other piece that drives home, this morning, we were just meeting again with Arlington Public Schools and Alexandria City Schools, and again, talking about critical teacher shortage. I just, you know, and we've had a little bit of that problem at Oak Street this year with teachers, and I just, this is, to me, this is not the time to be cutting back on support mechanisms for our teachers. It's just, teacher shortage is just too critical. And I've also said to many community members, you know, I know it's, I completely understand that this is a burden, we just heard it from Dr. Ortiz, for our ESOL community, you know, parents who are either single parents or both working parents. We don't have, we have some childcare options, but we probably need to expand that. And I think, you know, as I've said before, I think both things are true. This is a burden on parents, not all parents, but many parents, but this is also a great benefit to our teachers. So, I would, long story short, I would suggest that we keep early release as it is. This is just, again, me not speaking for the board. I think Mr. Lewin makes some great points, and maybe there's some flexibility to add a day or two at the secondary level, especially those months like the infamous March month where there's no breaks. Maybe we add an extra day or two at the secondary level with plenty of notice for families in advance. And then I guess, my only other, I guess, suggestion would be that we centralize our childcare options. I think that's one thing we heard during these town halls, it's hard to find, you know, Parks and Rec offers something, Barudy offers something, Falls Church City offers, you know, so is there a way that maybe, you know, we could provide this service to the community, that there's one clearinghouse with different, you know, different childcare options on Wednesdays? And so, I think, you know, trying to beef up that, you know, and it's probably a combination of working with Parks and Rec and Katie Clinton, our childcare director, our daycare director, and also the PTAs, you know, can they work with Barudy camps and offer more options? So, I think it is a support for our teachers, but again, I do understand that this is tough on many families, so I'm not, I want to acknowledge that. So, that's just my thoughts. And who would like to talk next? I know someone else. Yes, Ms. Tice.
Okay, thank you. I tend to think a lot of the same things as Chair Downs, but I will say in terms of the start times, well, in both of these decisions, really, I think, you know, where, the goal here is to think of students and teachers by, as they support students, so it has to be sort of student-first. And when I think about the start times, I just do not see any significant negatives by changing from, to an 8:30 to a 3:10 schedule. We can, you know, we can debate on how, on the impact from a mental health perspective, and the data seems very clear, but there's certainly not any data that it's going to be harmful, and all the data suggests that it would be beneficial. And so, I would fully support a change in those start times. I do think, you know, the academic day is mandatory and within our purview. So, when we think about the impact on sports or the before-school, the after-school, and those sorts of things, I think those are more flexible and they're less within our purview as a school board member. So, I feel my job is to think about the students and the academic day, which is why I would support this and the potential benefits for student health. I also would strongly support an alignment of the, at the elementary school level, whether it's, whether or not it's exactly the same schedule, that it would at least be the same duration. I do feel like we heard some very reasonable feedback on how it didn't seem equitable, that the duration of the elementary schools, school student day might be a 10-minute difference. So, I would like to see an updated version of the plan with those in alignment, either, like I said, at least with duration, if not exact times. In terms of the early release Wednesday, I came into that conversation with a pretty open mind. I did not think that childcare needed to be the driving force of the decision because I feel like that is secondary. I feel like there are a lot of ways we can be creative and work together as a community, and it just, again, when you're putting students and teachers first, like, that just wasn't my top priority. I fully recognize the challenges, but I think that is a separate conversation that we can continue to work on, and I know there's, we've had a lot of conversations on the creative ways we can support families who have trouble with that and something we can continue to do. So, I was more interested in the student and teacher perspective from the early release Wednesdays conversation, and I was curious to hear from teachers on, and it wasn't obvious to me that it was going to be their preferred schedule. You know, I could have predict, I mean, I could have seen them saying, we wanted more continuity of instruction, or we want like longer full-day planning days and professional development opportunities. And so, I thought it was incredibly valuable that the teachers engaged with the conversation so clearly and at the preschool and at the elementary level in such a uniform manner. To me, it seemed completely obvious, and I wish the teachers could have heard how many times, to Chair Downs' point, how many times parents said, that is a huge burden, it is a huge inconvenience, but please don't get rid of it because we want to support our teachers. And I just thought that was a really powerful message, too, that I wish more of our teachers could have heard how much the parents were championing them and wanting to do whatever it took to support those teachers. So, that, I felt like was really powerful. I'm still a little bit conflicted on the secondary, on the secondary piece for early release Wednesdays because I don't feel like we've had as uniform a message from that community, students and teachers. So, I would, based on the feedback we've gotten, be more inclined to keep it as is, but I do, probably that's where I remain the most flexible. But in general, I just support the change in start times, and I would be supportive of keeping the early release Wednesdays as it is.
Thank you, Ms. Tice.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Silverman.
I'll go. Oh, sorry.
Okay, Dr. Dimick, go ahead.
Okay, I, I guess I'll just build on what Chair Downs said and what Ms. Tice said. I'm supportive of the, of the later start time for the secondary campus. I think, I'm also, I would be okay with some wiggle room in there if we needed to, for the buses, like if we, we needed to make it 8:20 to make the buses work or to adjust with elementary school. But I do think sleep is valuable. There's a lot of research, and I'm supportive of a later start time there. For early release, I think, I think our teachers really were very uniform at elementary level of how important that is to them and what they use it for. And I, I think that if we're going to treat our teachers as the professionals they are, they've demonstrated that this is a very useful time for professional development, horizontal planning, as well as vertical planning, and for those, the IEP meetings that need to happen and all of that communication. I am supportive of keeping the early release as it is. I, we did hear from parents, some, some parents have some confusion of what days we're having early release. But it is on our calendar, on our website, and it's there all year long. So I think we're very clear on what days that we have early release. So I'm supportive of keeping the early release for the elementary. For secondary, I think we've, we've asked a lot for input from our secondary campus on what the staff feel about early release. And I think we really haven't heard from them, which suggests to me that additional early release is not critical for our staff at the secondary campus. I think we would have heard from them if it was important to them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Yes, Dr. Ortiz.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Downs. I'm going to actually disagree, at least present my opinion. First, let me go through a couple of things that I think haven't been said about what we've heard. One is that at Jesse Thackery, my, I didn't make that, but I understand that they expressed the desire, they expressed that early-release Wednesdays weren't actually particularly necessary, and that they would prefer some other changes to the schedule. And I can't represent exactly what those were. So that's one, one piece of the puzzle. I think I'd like to put a little bit of color on the Oak Street and Mount Daniel feedback. The primary planning that we heard was what Dr. Noonan has told us is north-south planning, which is the parent professionals working with the grade-level teachers or math teachers across grades or, or what have you. So, and, and, you know, and that's not structured into the day, and it's actually pretty difficult to structure into the day generally, right? So, and, and I think the other thing that we heard is, you know, one thing you could say is, I think this goes to Ms. Tice's point, you know, well, you could say, well, we can have like, yeah, I don't know, like a quarterly or bimonthly full day or a couple of full days or something like that of training. And, and what we heard was, no, actually, we need to have these meetings pretty regularly, right? You know, I think that was, that was what we've heard in order to, to be able to coordinate effectively. And then, so we heard that. And then we spent a lot of time, and then we heard a lot of feedback in support of that from families, and I appreciate that. But what, and, and we started, we didn't solve these problems. We started to think through potential options for how to manage childcare. And that's a, that's a huge logistical thing. And we, you know, we're not pretending to solve that here, just, you know, acknowledging that's the case. But I think the, the piece that we didn't do is say, hey, well, can we actually roll up our sleeves and think, is there a way for us to make this part of the day, right? You know, like you go to. And, and we haven't, you know, and I don't, I haven't heard a, a solution to that. And I don't know if there is one, right? And, and I think the reason why is to me, oh, and then, before, before we go on. So that was, that was, you know, we just, we, that's a discussion we haven't had. And, and I'm not saying that that would be an easy thing to do. But I also probably think that, like figuring out ways to, to manage, like additional childcare is probably also not an easy thing to do either. So I don't want to, you know, put one degree of difficulty over the next. And then we heard, I think, a couple of salient points regarding the early release at the secondary level is the days get compressed. And given the way that our teaching is structured, it's really hard for teachers to make any kind of educational impact on those days. So yeah, it's great to like have the afternoon off, but you can, don't have, you know, you can't run through, you can't run through a real lesson in that time, especially the way that we, we've done things. So it's been particularly difficult. That's not to say that monthly doesn't make sense for other reasons. So that's on, on the early release. So let me just say, you know, kind of what I'm thinking of that, and I'll turn to the start times. I, I have to emphasize that this is really an issue of equity. To me, I think a lot of families, you know, we've heard from a lot of families, and we're a very, very wealthy town, they can manage this, right? Oh, we, we figured out a way, we can figure this out, you know, there's, you know, there's families who can't and whose kids, you know, just come home and stare at a screen or, you know, really don't get supervised. And that's not good for those kids. And, you know, and, you know, and it's useful that their teachers are, are thinking about them. But, you know, this is, you know, this is, this is tough. And it's something that I would like to see us, I don't think that we're in a position, given what we know, to make a change for the next year. But I would like to, to start thinking about a glide path to not having them. Like, and, and making that pretty clear. And I don't know if it's the '25, '26 school year, the '26, '27 school year, but sometime for us to work through various issues, you know, this issue, you know, the issues, and come up with a glide path to, to make these go away. So I wouldn't be supportive of endorsing, maintaining them in, in, in the current form and ad infinitum. Regarding the, the start times, the way that it's been structured is that just because of transportation issues, is that it would actually push the elementary times a little bit later. I know that our neighboring jurisdictions have later elementary start times. Again, families would adapt. I'll just tell you personally, when Oak Street moved from an 8:40 start to an 8:50 start, I almost lost my head because I had, you know, like staff meetings that I needed to move around and stuff like that. And I did. But, you know, I think it's just, just shifting things even a little bit, especially at the beginning of the day, can be a real challenge for working families. And so I, I think that, given the constraints around us moving people, I don't think that, I, I'm really, I can't be in favor of moving to 8:30. And I think Dr. Dimick said, like, we could go to 8:20. I'm also wary of trying to just cut time. You know, I know that some students don't really think stable block is super effective, but other students really, really use it. And it's an important part of how we structure the way that we provide a whole curriculum to our students. And so I, you know, you know, not to say that, you know, the days aren't malleable, we might have changed them for whatever reason. But I'm really not in favor of cutting the day and the, and the, and the minutes. And therefore, you know, I think if we can figure out a way to shift the start time five minutes or 10 minutes, just to gain an incremental benefit, I'd be in favor of that. But moving it to 8:30, you know, given the changes that's been proposed, I can't be in favor of because of the burden that it will place on the elementary families. So that's what I'm thinking. You know, I think it's a little different than, than we all thinking. It's just the way that I've kind of parsed the, the inputs.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. One question I had is a follow-up. You talked about a glide path. One of the options Dr. Noonan offered was a model where we would go down to, basically to a month, give or take, and the whole system would be aligned. So you would be reducing those early-release Wednesdays. Is that, when you think, when you talk about glide path, what, why would you not consider, not why would you not, but would you consider that as a glide path?
No, I, I don't think so. And, and the reason why is a following, is I think, well, actually, we know, let's put it like this. Yes, absolutely, that's a glide path. You know, I agree with that. But I think what we heard is that, you know, if you have them all the time, it's one thing, right? You know, it's a burden, but it like, you know, you have a little bit of a, you know, at least, at least it's something you can plan around. Like, hey, on Wednesdays, I need this help. You know, if it's every other week, or if it shifts because of holidays and this other stuff, you know, that just gets really confusing. You know, I mean, I, you know, I get confused even with the monthly at the secondary campus. And like, it's been on the calendar for a year. So, you know, and, and I should be paying attention. So, you know, I think it's just having, the least, less frequent they are, I think almost the more disruptive they are.
Okay. Ms. Silverman.
Thank you, Chair Downs. I'm going to first address the start times, if I may. I agree with Dr. Ortiz that any shift in ti, in start times should not affect the elementary schools. So I'm actually all in favor of an 8:30 start time if that would not affect the elementary school. And I would leave that to school administrators and operations to figure out if that was possible. If an 8:30 start time does not affect the elementary schools, then I would be in favor of that in addition to ensuring that no academics are cut either. One thing I, it's interesting. One thing I learned while I was shadowing, just for the public to know, the school board members shadowed different school administrators a week or two ago. I learned that there is a six-minute passing period at the middle and, and high school. And one thing that was said was, six minutes is needed because the time that, for some students to get from one campus to the other. While it might not be every student that has to make that longer distance travel, some students do need that full six minutes. So that is something to take into consideration. I would not be in favor of cutting academics. So the question is, where do you cut? I don't know. You know, so again, I really want our students to have all the sleep that they possibly can without affecting elementary and ensuring that academics are not affected and ensuring that kids actually can get to class on time is also, you know, taken into consideration. As far as early release goes, we did hear loud and clearly from the elementary teachers that this is something valuable. And I heard that also. I think that many families in our, in our neighborhoods have also really stated how valuable the early release is for the teachers, and they want to support the teachers. And I heard that. However, along with what Dr. Ortiz said, I, I agree, this is a matter of equity. And what one parent said is, you know, this is one of the most inequitable policies that I can think of a school system having, you know, allowing, you know, having some students sitting at home on an iPad and other students possibly getting extracurricular activities, getting enrichment activities. And that just, you know, causes that inequity to become even more, even more felt within our community. There was one email that we had, that our school board had received that I think is really telling. And it's from a, a member of our community who works in the mental health space. And this person wrote, "Early-release Wednesdays pose challenges for working parents, particularly those in low-income households. Many working parents are unable to leave their jobs during the middle of the day and in turn struggle to arrange childcare or supervision for their children during these early-release hours. Early-release Wednesday can therefore be disruptive to work schedules, pose potential financial hardships, and exacerbate existing achievement gaps." And it's that last piece that I think is really important, exacerbating existing achievement gaps. Moreover, students who have access to private tutors or extracurricular enrichment activities on early-release days have a distinct advantage over peers who do not. This further perpetuates disparities in academic outcomes and opportunities for our students." I think that sums it up perfectly of why I feel that the status quo currently is not something that we should be continuing with. I would be, I'm not saying to eliminate because I do see a value that teachers are getting. And I'm trying to, I, I hear them and I, and I see them. And I'm trying to balance these two interests, these, this inequities on, especially the disadvantaged families that we heard from. And we just heard tonight that 37, there was an, our economically disadvantaged families grew by 37% in, in Falls Church City. And now it's over 10% of our student population. We heard that from the demographer who spoke earlier. So balancing that with balancing the interest of teachers, you know, I think reducing the early-release Wednesdays is probably the right path to go. I, I think Dr. Ortiz might have thought a little bit differently than I did on that. So I'm not completely concurring with him on that piece. But especially reducing would be the right path for now.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Faschir Gold?
Yeah. I will start with, I support keeping early release Wednesday as it is now. And I also support, strongly support a start time of 8:30. So for the reasons that were mentioned. Speaking of early-release Wednesday, I do agree with Dr. Ortiz that, that he successfully reminded us that the JTP Town Hall that we did, there was a strong advocacy for getting rid of early-release Wednesdays for JTP. So if that's a possibility from an operational perspective, I'll leave that to Dr. Noonan and his team to, to work with. I do feel like if keeping the early-release Wednesday option, it, it does create inequitable opportunities as long as we, if we don't provide childcare. I think we've been actively exploring that. I know Dr. Noonan has been exploring that. And I feel like from a resource perspective, we should significantly increase the opportunities and spaces for students to have childcare options to address exactly what Ms. Silverman mentioned. I would, I, I feel like it was interesting, when we started the early-release Wednesday discussion back in the spring, I was probably of the mindset that reducing or even eliminating is, is a viable option. And just knowing from my own teaching experience, I was, I was in favor. I would say that the work that we did, and I'll applaud us, if I can allow to do that, we don't get a lot of applause these days, for our Town Hall efforts, we had over, I can't remember the number of Town Halls we had, 10-plus. And overwhelmingly, there was support for keeping the, the early-release Wednesdays. And I feel like, even though I had a different perspective or framework, I really appreciated the change in the framework I had from talking with so many community members. The, so, so I'm definitely in favor of keeping the early-release Wednesday. And I would say that if we write this as a policy, if at another time a school board wanted to revisit it, I would hope that they would do the work that we did to explore that, to make the changes that reflect what the community wants. In terms of the start time, I have not wavered on this. I've always said that this is going to be a community sacrifice. The elementary school community, to Dr. Ortiz's point, will have to change the schedules. There will be changes in the schedule, but I feel like we owe it to our secondary students based on the significant amount of research that shows the social and emotional well-being that is attributed to late, to later start times. So I feel like as a community, we all have to make that sacrifice. And it is a difficult sacrifice to make for some families, and I do acknowledge that. But I think it's important for our students. And I do know that some students will be making a sacrifice. We did hear from students that said, moving it back 8:30 might not help my schedule. And I fully understand that based on their prior obligations. But I would say this policy is one of the few policies that we can fully make that says, this is for our students. And I'm proud to support this. We did hear from our students that we should not cut the time for Mustang Block. We heard that three or four times in our student Town Hall. And I'm sure our student rep, Sean, has probably heard that as well, that it's an important piece. I think to Ms. Silverman's point, cutting it all from an academic block is, is, would be difficult. But I would close with Mr. Laub said that he assured us that he would work with students and obviously the team to figure out where to cut that time. And he felt strongly that cutting one to two minutes from each academic block is not going to significantly impact the instructional experience that students would have. And so I would trust Mr. Laub and his efforts to work, and Mr. Pickren's efforts to work with students to address those changes. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you so much, Faschir Gold. I think you're the last man standing.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think all my colleagues here have mentioned many of the things that we've heard in the Town Halls, from emails, from standing at the bus stop, from seeing people at soccer games. There is overwhelming support at, at the elementary school from the teachers for keeping early-release Wednesdays. There is, you know, we, we've gotten a lot of feedback from parents who say, this is a huge burden on us, but we still want to keep it. And, and I, and, you know, that's one of the perspectives that I really appreciate because it's one of those things where you can kind of say, oh, you know, like this is a burden and I want to get rid of it. Or this is a benefit, but I still want to get rid of it. I, I, I appreciate those parents who say, this is a big burden, but we still want to keep it. Specifically, when, you know, I'm a, you know, part of the special ed community and, and speaking to my friends in that community, the parents there, you know, I, I came into the discussion, and I'm still kind of torn on. kind of torn on early-release Wednesdays, but I came into the discussion with the experience that my son had a lot of difficulty going into some aftercare, particularly if it was just one day a week, particularly if those people were going to be very unfamiliar. I also know other parents who have children who, like, they're not going to be able to use any aftercare. And they know it, but they still advocate for keeping their early-release Wednesdays. And I think, in thinking about equity, we also need to think about, okay, well, what do our teachers do during the time that they use early-release Wednesdays? That is the time that the special ed teachers have to talk to the gen ed teacher, to talk to the specialist teachers, to kind of prepare those teachers for caring for those students. And so I think that's something important. It's one of those things where a lot of the feedback has been, you know, we're able to take care of this, and, you know, I can take my kid to, you know, whatever enrichment thing, and that's great that people can do that. That's not something that, I think, we don't necessarily need to make our decision based on whether somebody can take their kid to, whether somebody has it solved. At the same time, as Dr. Ortiz and Ms. Silverman mentioned, you know, this is a burden, like, this is a burden on low-income families. There is no question that it is a burden. And particularly, even though some of my colleagues want to keep the schedule the same as it is, I wouldn't support it staying the same. I would say that if we are going to keep it, we need to go to weekly, because it is disruptive to those members of our community who find it the most difficult to have it, you know, all these Wednesdays, except for this Wednesday. I mean, while people can schedule it, I've heard many, many people who, you know, even me, dang it, it's half-day Wednesday again. So I think going to every Wednesday would be much more beneficial than keeping it as it is. But I will say that I think we need to be committed to actually providing a childcare solution and funding it with transportation if we are going to keep it. I don't think it is fair to those parents who find it, you know, hard to work around, hard to, even if they can kind of work around it, it'd still be hard if they didn't have transportation. And particularly if we're gonna, as Ms. Silverman mentioned, we've had an increase in the number of students who are economically disadvantaged. And I think it would be incumbent on this community as a wealthy community, which we have been, so many of the emails that we've gotten say, we're a wealthy community, we can handle early-release Wednesdays. And I am wholeheartedly in agreement that we're a wealthy community and we can handle early-release Wednesdays, so long as we are committed to providing childcare and transport from that childcare for those students who need it. And start times, yeah, I think we should push it back.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson. Okay, and one follow-up, I just wanted, Mr. Lewin, you were talking about early-release Wednesdays. I think your point was more about the student perspective, right? And wanting more that students felt that that would be something that was, I know Dr. Dimick, I agree with Dr. Dimick. When we met with the teachers, there wasn't like an overabundance of excitement from teachers to have more, but I think your perspective was from the student perspective, that there was a desire from the students you spoke with about having more early-release Wednesdays. Is that right? Okay. And I think that was more for the, just the mental health piece and the being able to have some free time to get things done and socialization and.
I mean, yeah. In terms of like my peers and I, I feel as though additional short Wednesdays would definitely be the preferred choice for the board. It is used for extracurricular activities. I know a lot of students and peers of mine who are in National Honor Society or different service communities like that, use that time for service hours, and they go out into the community and do activities of that nature. And I know a lot of students, especially when it comes time for exams, in the spring they use that as study time, and they go to different establishments around town and they study. And, yeah, I feel as though also just the social, emotional wellness piece of it all, it is great to have a break, you know, and especially in months like March and April and May, where things pick up and get more stressful for students, especially for juniors and seniors as they have IB exams and AP exams. Those breaks are so appreciated, and I feel as that definitely would be the student perspective in terms of early-release Wednesdays, but I also do acknowledge the challenges with all of that. But in terms of my peers and I, I would feel as though that's the consensus.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Silverman.
If I could just respond to Dr. Anderson's, one of his comments. Dr. Anderson had brought up, you know, with possibility, one idea was moving to every week of early release. I just do want to bring up the fact that Dr. Noonan had pointed out at our last work session, that our students in this area have the lowest amount of hours in the classroom. So I think that that would exacerbate that issue if we added more early release. So I just wanted us to be cognizant of that fact.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. And just to follow up, Dr. Anderson, your advocacy for, I just wanted to be clear, for transportation, and was it paid-for, free childcare? So that was, you were talking about in terms of the community that is at the lower socioeconomic status?
At the very least.
Okay, okay. Because I think part of it is, you know, this is my, just thought, of course, I'm not operational, but, you know, we are wealthy, I think there's, you know, I think there's a difference between talking about some, a smaller segment of the community, I think busing an entire, you know, everyone who's in early release would be probably, I think Dr. Noonan would say, would be very hard to find the number of bus drivers. But if you're speaking of a smaller segment of the community that is in a financial need, that might be more doable.
I don't doubt that we would have to put resources into it, but we also currently provide buses for a late release at, like a late pickup at the high school. I don't see any reason why we couldn't spend the money to do that for an after-care program for half-day Wednesdays for those who really need it. And even for those, so, and even for those who aren't necessarily economically disadvantaged, I see no reason why we couldn't provide that bus service. If we needed to, say, provided some bonus to bus drivers in order to incentivize them to do that, I think that would be perfectly worth the cost.
Okay. So maybe, Dr. Noonan, that would be something that we could look into and see with the, you know, and also the logistics of, with the secondary late buses, you know, how that would all work. Okay, well, thank you, I'm sorry.
I just, I thank you all for your comments. I'm not gonna respond to all of them. I do want to just say that we have tried to kick around the idea of an after-school program for Wednesdays only, and I think the challenge there for us is really where would we have it? So one of the things, because all of the space at the two elementary schools is being used by the after-school program currently, so one thing we could look at is maybe busing kids off of the Mount Daniel and Oak Street site, you know, to somewhere else. You know, the high school and the middle school are gonna be used because class will be in session, so I think our challenge is gonna be, if there is an uptake of a significant number of students, is really the space. So we're trying to sort through that. The other thing that I think we need to be prepared for is if we start offering busing on Wednesdays, we might get pushed to offer buses on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, which we currently don't do at the elementary schools. So I just think we need to kind of be prepared for that, too. So, you know, we can certainly look into it, but, and we have been. I don't want people to think that we haven't been looking at this. It is a challenge. And then the other thing, I just want to respond to Dr. Ortiz. I've built master schedules in every level of the school for the last, I've done about fifteen of them, and I will say it's a virtual impossibility to get both vertical and horizontal teaming in the same, at the same time. You can do one, but it's virtually impossible to do both. And I think the challenge at the elementary schools is the way that the specials are organized and providing grade-level teams time together. So I will say that that's really a tall order, that even with the most creative minds across the country who've written books about it, have a hard time doing two. So just wanted to say that. It's not that we're against it, it'd be great to be able to do it, it's just a challenge time-wise.
Yes, Vice Chair Gold.
Just two follow-up questions, Dr. Noonan. You mentioned, can you clarify, you said we can't offer, you don't want to offer buses on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday?
For the daycare.
For daycare.
It's not that I don't want to, we currently don't. We don't offer any busing for daycare after-school at the elementaries right now.
So that'd be like daycare that ends like at later than the, so if we offered, so the idea of offering, I think to Dr. Anderson, I'm not paraphrasing, but if we offered busing just for Wednesday after-care that ends at a normal time, not like a later time, is that what you were advocating? Is that still an issue you're thinking, or?
I think we need to look at it. We do have the secondary buses that run. I'm not sure what their capacity is, and there may be some ways to loop back for students on Wednesdays, or to seek additional drivers for additional buses on those Wednesdays. It's, I don't know. I guess my point was, we have about three hundred and fifty kids that are in the after-care daycare program that we currently don't bus, and if we start offering it on Wednesdays, you might get a push to offer it every day. That's all I'm saying, and that would be a challenge for us.
No, that makes sense. I don't think we heard the need for pushing for after-care buses for those days, but, yeah, it was more the Wednesday, just the Wednesday. But, yeah, and we can, we would definitely push back if that's gonna be, cause an operational headache for you all, if we start to get that. And then you also mentioned, can you clarify for the community, you said you're concerned about space at the schools? I imagine someone in the community might say, you know, we have space, why can't we run two after-care programs in the same huge elementary school? Can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, I think, I think that, and it's not that we can't do it, I don't want to, it's just a challenge, right? Right now, we have, just for rough order of magnitude, a hundred and fifty students after-school at Mount Daniel and a hundred and fifty students after-school at Oak Street that are daycare students that are there five days a week, including the half-day Wednesdays. Those students are using the cafeteria, they're using the gym, they're using some of the larger spaces that we have available. And the amount, the amount of students that are there take up those spaces pretty significantly with the limited number of adults that we have, based on the ratios for providing that care. If we do increase by, let's say, a hundred kids at each of those sites, it would mean that we would need probably four to five more people to keep the ratios right for our daycare or for our care provisions, and then those hundred students would need to be somewhere else, right? Because the cafeteria's full, the gym's full, they could be outside, we could do the rotations, but it just becomes a challenge with space. So what we would need to do then is go back to our teachers and say, because we don't use classroom space. And let me be clear about that. And we don't use classroom space because teachers don't want kids in their classrooms after school. So we may need to go back to our teachers and say, hey, if we're gonna run, you know, one rotation of tutoring and one rotation of something else, can we use your classroom? We're not opposed to doing that, I don't think. We just need to, I think the challenge for us is finding, finding four people for each of the sites, if we added a hundred kids to each site or more, and then finding the space for it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure that I'm clear, because I don't want you to think that I'm opposed to anything. You've said I'm opposed, I'm not opposed, it's just a challenge. That's all.
Thanks.
Thank you. And we realize, Dr. Noonan, and I know Ms. Michael is with us as well, virtually, you know, there's lots and lots of operational pieces to this, so we definitely understand that. So one of the things Vice Chair Gold did, mentioned, talking about policy, and I contacted you all, and it seemed like the majority of the board is interested in putting our decision into policy. So is that correct? I'm seeing head nods. I know Ms. Silverman wasn't sure.
I'm still, sorry.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. And so I think, so that is, and I know Dr. Dimick was, so that's at least five of us interested to put it into policy. So what we'll do from here is, and, you know, as I've talked to, communicated with the board, it could, you know, be likely that this is not a unanimous vote, and that's okay. What we'll do from here is that Vice Chair Gold and I will work with Ms. Minson and Dr. Noonan to come up with a policy. And again, this is, you know, there's, we're not, the seven of us aren't in complete agreement. So, you know, we'll work on a policy and a draft of a policy to get your all feedback. And it may be that not everyone supports that policy, and then that's, you know, of course, you're, you know, a school board member's free to vote against the policy when it comes to a vote. But the idea would be that, as we've talked many times, that at the core of our responsibilities and missions are policies. And to that end, we would look to do a first reading of a policy at our next meeting at November twenty-eighth. And then, and again, that would be after, you know, over the next week, Vice Chair Gold and I reaching out to you all with a draft of policies for both of these. We would do a first reading on November twenty-eighth and a second reading and a vote at our meeting in December. So that's what we're looking at. And again, we invite the community, again, to, as always, email us at schoolboard@fccps.org with any feedback. And just wanting to thank the community who's come out to our Town Halls, to students and staff and to this board. I mean, you know, it's exactly right, and I think, Vice Chair Gold, you made a great point, that, you know, hopefully future, if anything were to change with the policy, that we put a lot of time and effort into this. And I think we all really did keep open minds, and I think we went into it with certain ideas and perceptions, and a lot of our minds were changed as a result of all this outreach that we've done. So, but again, we have not made a final decision, so the community is welcome to email us questions and feedback. One thing, oh, actually, one thing I did want to, sorry, we did receive an email from the Athletic Boosters, I wanted to close with that. And so this is, I think, more operational with Ms. Michael and Dr. Noonan. They supported changing the start times with a three-ten-end time, as long as it, we were able to balance it all with needing buses to get kids to sporting events. So I'll leave that to you all, but I just wanted to bring that up.
I will say, you know, it's, there are an awful lot of competing demands in all of this, and I think that'll be a challenge for us to sort of sort through with these competing demands. I just want to give you all a sense of sort of my back-of-the-napkin thought in terms of the high school schedule, just to kind of put it in your mind. This is not at all the final, but just something to think about. Currently, our blocks of time for instruction range from eighty-four minutes to eighty-seven minutes. And one of the things we could do is to equalize each of those to eighty-two minutes. So you've got three instructional blocks at eighty-two minutes, plus stable and Mustang block. If we took stable, so if we did that, we would save a few minutes. And based on the conversations we've had with Peter Laub and the other administrators that wouldn't impact instruction because of the way it's organized, we currently do six-minute passing periods. We could go, we could go to five. I've walked the building, I've put it out there, I've done a video of myself walking up and down that building in less than five minutes and over to the middle school. So if we went to five, that saves us some more time. And then if we took one minute from stable block, that would get us to fifteen minutes without touching Mustang block. So there are ways to sort of cut this where it's really negligible and on the margin to where it wouldn't have a significant, significant impact on instruction. And there are fifteen other permutations, or fifteen hundred other permutations of that. I just wanted you to know for, and also for the public to know, that we wouldn't cut fifteen minutes from a class, or fifteen minutes from, we wouldn't cut out stable block, for example. So it would be just little bits and bites here and there. And of course, if you extrapolate that out over the year, it is, it is lost instructional time, but I do think a lot of the time used in an eighty-minute, eighty-two-minute, and most blocks that I've experienced are somewhere between seventy-five and eighty. So when I look at it and see anywhere from eighty-four to eighty-seven, that's an extraordinary amount of time. I do think that that time can be structured well to serve the needs of our kids.
Thank you for that, Dr. Noonan, very helpful. Any other questions or comments before we close this out? Okay, well, thank you very much for this good discussion. And we're gonna move on now to eight point zero two, second reading and adoption of policies. And can I send it straight over to Ms. Minson? Ms. Minson?
Good evening. We have one policy for second reading this evening. It's a policy the board had
the board had previously adopted, and the V S B A updated based on changes to the Virginia Code. It's Policy EB, School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan. There were no changes proposed by the board at first reading. I did notice that line 92 was missing a comma, so I did add that. That would be the one change from first reading. Are there any questions about Policy EB? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Minson. All right, if we could have then a motion to approve the Policy EB, please? Yes, Dr. Anderson?
I move that the school board approves second reading and adoption of Policy EB, School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan as presented.
Thank you. Could I have a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Gould. All those in favor say yes. Yes. All those opposed say no. Thank you. Motion carries. And we're now at 9.01, future agenda items. Anyone have any thoughts on future agenda items?
Hi.
Oh, hi, Dr. Dimmick.
Could I add a future agenda item, even though I'm leaving the board?
Yes. Let, let's give them a long to-do list, Dr. Dimmick.
I just, I, I, I really enjoyed the Shadow Day. I, I am appreciative to Principal Doherty and, and Principal Kate, excuse me, for sharing their time with me. And I also found it very valuable to meet with Katie Clinton and Denzel Wynton of the daycare program. And I think school board members should do this regularly, just my two cents. I, it was the first time I'd done something like that since being on the board, and it was really helpful to see how the different pieces fit together, and especially interesting to, to talk with the daycare program folks. So.
Thank you, Dr. Dimmick. Yeah, that's, it's, it's a great suggestion. I, I remember when, when Vice Chair Gould came on the board and I talked to the new board members and suggested that when, when we look at advisory committees, that you pick an advisory committee that you're not really as familiar with as a way to increase your knowledge. And this is another way, you know, maybe it's, it's something that as, as board members come on or just, or current, but just, you know, trying to fill in those, those gaps, you know, whether it's that you don't, you have younger children, you don't have older children, or you don't have children that are in, you know, this or that, or you don't have a knowledge, you don't have kids that use, use aftercare, you know, all these different sorts of things. It just makes you a stronger school board member. So I think that's a really good, good suggestion. One thing, Ms. Tyson, I recently attended the regional leadership meeting of the area school systems, and we, we talked about the literacy, what is it called? The Literacy Act? Virginia's Literacy Act. And so I, I think we both found that very interesting and helpful. And so I thought that might be an interesting work session, Dr. Noonan, at some point next year, just to educate the, the public on what, what that's all about.
We, we would love to have Dr. Ann Boleto come and talk about the work she's doing, along with many of our reading specialists across the, the system. They've been on top of it. You know, we're, we're already immersed pretty heavily in it, and the work is, is good. So love to have, have them come talk.
That'd be great. And then, as I mentioned previously, I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee. Ms. Sharp's not going to be happy, I was going to say this, but I, I was so impressed by that meeting. This is, I was able to, because Ms. Tyson couldn't go, I had the fortune of, of going and attending that meeting. And it was just, I learned so much, and I've been on the board for four years, and I just think that at some point, at Ms. Sharp's choosing, maybe a, a work session presentation from Ms. Sharp on just all, you know, she, it's, it's just, it was very, I found it very informative. And so, you know, I think that would be a nice topic for you all to have an update on what's going on in special education services.
For sure. We'll, we'll add that. Thank you.
Don't be mad at me. Okay, anything else? All right. So we are now at 10.01, superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. All right. So under wellness and equity and belonging, I want to just start by giving a huge shout out to our girls' field hockey team. They ended the season, the regular season 18-0 and finished the season 21-1. And had a great time going to the playoff games, and then also to the final at Clare and Downs. And I want to give Clare and Downs a shout out. Thanks Rebecca Tax for hosting the event, both for the, the state semi and also for the, the final. But they, they played hard, they played well this year, and displayed a notable amount of teamwork, dedication, and sportsmanship. And while they, they finished runner-up in the state, they have nothing to feel bad about. They were extraordinary. I also want to just mention that we had an environmental project event over, an environmental festival at Meridian on Monday that focused on sustainability actions, which we're really excited about during this event. All of our students at the high school had the opportunity to participate in a variety of projects, service projects, including propagating plants to use as gifts for staff, building bee hotels, creating art, creating stress balls, engaging in self-care activities. And this was all, all a student organized and student-led event that was initiated by Meridian High School's junior, Ally Zagorski, and involved a number of students from a variety of different groups, including the Environmental Club, Triumph, Hand to Hunger, the Art Club, and Minds Matter. But a special highlight was the planting of some daffodil bulbs. If you're not, if you don't know about these daffodil bulbs, let me just quickly tell you about them. These were dug out of Lou Olum's yard. So some of you might know the name Lou Olum, but Lou Olum is the father of the IB program in the city of Falls Church. And he died a couple of years ago at a very good age. He, he lived a good, long life. But he, in his yard, had just prolific daffodils. And so Mary Beth Conley and a bunch of people went in and dug out all of these bulbs from the yard with the appropriate permission from the Olum family, I might add. But we did plant a bunch of those, they did plant a bunch of those in the Legacy Grove. So Lou will be with us for, for years to come, which is really great. A special shout out to Jenny Thomas, who really helped and aided in that event. In terms of IB infused teaching and learning, the P Y P exhibition starts this month. This is the culminating project as students finish their elementary years and the P Y P. It's a big deal for Oak Street fifth grade students. As many of you know who've been there, they, they pick a topic, they dive deeply into that topic. And after almost a decade of implementing our projects, our fifth grade teachers are experts on how to make it part of their curriculum. It's a great example of how individual students are able to accelerate their own learning, and everyone can just, can participate at their own level. I'm particularly excited about it, and I know Ms. Michael probably is too, and, and Dr. Bates, because we all help co-facilitate a group at some point of the exhibition. And it's a nice opportunity for us to be back in the classroom, working with kids, and helping them through. And then the last piece I wanted to mention around resource management and continuous improvement, as I mentioned, or was mentioned in the video, the rooftop solar is going on at the high school. We have a really nice event that's going to be a ribbon cutting on Tuesday, December 5th at 3:30 on the fifth floor at Meridian. You'll be able to see those fields, quote unquote, fields of PV array on the, on the roof, and we're excited about that. And information about the event and actually the announcements will come later this week. So be on the lookout for that. But it should be a nice event. We had a really great day today. It's one of the few days that we get a chance to go out and give away money with the Falls Church Ed Foundation. And today was the Falls Church Ed Foundation Super Grant Celebration Parade. Remember, we're not allowed to use Prize Patrol anymore because we got a cease and desist letter from the publisher's clearinghouse. So we now call it the Celebration Parade. But that was held today, and I'm pleased to, to have been accompanied with the Falls Church Ed Foundation leadership, gave 18 awards out throughout the division. And some of the highlights were at Mount Daniel. Nicole Guimeris got 14 new Casio keyboards, and we'll start a program called the Piano Stars. At Oak Street, we will have an artist in residence there and begin an art installation, much like we did at the high school. This will be slightly different as opposed to a murmuration of birds. It's going to be a school of fish. So that will be fun for all of our kids at Oak Street to participate in. And then Kish Rafiq won a project called Living Anatomy Labs, which is going to provide skeletons and clay for students to model muscles and anatomy. So that, those were fun to give out. We also announced some teacher training grant, grants, and a couple of them of note are Natalia Guzman, who's a teacher of Spanish at Mount Daniel, is taking IB workshop on the role of, role of language. At Henderson, our special ed administrator, Brittany Allen Shaw, will be attending Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder Training. There's a joke in there somewhere, but I'll hold it to myself. At Meridian, CTE teacher Kenny George will be bringing in a professional machinist to lead student safety training. And lastly, all of the school psychologists will be attending the National Association of School Psychologists Conference. And I just can't say enough about how much we appreciate the Ed Foundation and the extra support they provide to us, so that the money that we spend goes directly to our students or to teacher salaries, and they pick up a lot of things for us that we would be funding otherwise, but are very fortunate to have them as an additional source. So that's it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Any questions or? Great. Okay, we're going to move on now to board and student liaison comments. I'll start with Mr. Lewin. Do you have any updates with, for us?
I do. So firstly, I mean echoing Dr. Noonan, we're all so proud of the girls' field hockey team. That was such a like exciting communal like celebration that everyone at Meridian got to experience. As well as our girls' cross-country team, they placed eighth at states. And our football and volleyball teams also made it to the regional playoffs, which is a testament to their teamwork. And I am very happy also to report that Meridian's own Hand to Hunger Club recently began a food drive at the secondary campus and also at Oak Street Elementary. And they're collecting food donations to help those in need and donating the collection to Arlington Food Assistance Center. And we are proud of their community spirit and dedication to serving others. And they are beginning to expand not only to other schools in the area, but other countries around the world. The junior class SCA is hosting weekly in-school fundraisers called SCA Thursdays to fundraise for prom. And again, to echo Dr. Noonan, the Sustainability in Action Committee put on the Fall Festival in front of Meridian this Monday, which was super exciting. It was a fantastic opportunity for students to learn more about sustainability and environmental stewardship while having fun with their peers outdoors. Being the president of Meridian Minds Matter myself, it was very awesome to see everyone coming together to learn about how the seasons impact individual students' mental health, how to better support their peers, and to make fall-themed stress balls at our station. And at Meridian, veterans were recognized all over the screens for Veterans Day, displaying the names of all those who have served in the military from Meridian, which was super cool to see, and sparked a lot of conversation among students. And lastly, the gymnastics team recently had their interest meeting for their first ever season, and we were thrilled to see this new addition to our sports program and cannot wait to cheer them on as they grow and move forward. So there is evidently a lot going on, but there's something for every student to participate in, especially now. And our school community has been very busy, but doing great stuff.
Great, great update. Thank you so much, Mr. Lewin. Ms. Silverman?
I just want to comment, I'm so excited about this gymnastics team as a former gymnast. I'm thrilled that we have a gymnastics team. I can't wait. There's actually adult opportunities at a nearby gymnastics gym, and once I'm over my broken toe, I will be going. And I invite anybody else. They have open gym, so please come with me. We did, my updates, I attended a business and education meeting last, I think, yes, it was last week, and we discussed our, our committee charge, and hopefully we'll be voting on that soon. Additionally, I want to give a thanks to Mr. Fineran for participating in the legislative briefing we had this morning with our colleagues in Arlington and Alexandria City. I think it was a really great presentation that Mr. Fineran gave about our legislative package. It was really interesting to hear about the other school districts legislative packages and a lot of alignment and, which I, I don't think is unexpected. And I, I just see lots of ways that we can work together on hoping to bring about some positive legislation for our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. I'll, I'll watch you do tumbling, but I will not participate.
Once the toe is better, I will be there. And Chair Gould.
You're, you're already promoting him?
Did that again. Chair Downs, I expect you there with me. I, I did that at the last meeting. I'm tired. Chair Downs.
That's okay. Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Dr. Ortiz, any updates?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Downs. A couple of updates. My, 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 my back is hurting thinking of it. So I, as, you can kill two birds with one stone. Last night, we had both the Mustang Athletic Boosters meeting and the ESO advisory committee meeting. In addition to the aforementioned super success of the field hockey team and the great watch party that occurred to celebrate them, there's, there's, last night was winter sports info night, which was very popular. And then the homecoming game was a huge success for the boosters as well as for the, the schools. There's a bunch of, there's, there's, the, the boosters are working on a number of items with respect to sponsorships and other item, and, and other key initiatives. And then furthermore, winter sports swag has arrived. So please go to the Mustang Athletic Boosters website where you can order it. Moving on to the ESO advisory committee meeting, we really want to thank Amanda Ronco and Matt Sowers and the, and, and the head of the, of the Family Resource Center for joining us last night for a discussion of the ways in which our counseling staff supports English language learners at the, at the secondary campus. We heard a, a whole lot from them about their strategies for doing so, as well as their coordination across both the Family Resource Center, as well as with individual families and students. And really goes into helping that committee to start the process of meeting its charge this year, which is to further inclusivity for English language learners in all aspects of the Falls Church City public schools. And so with that, that's the end of, of my, of my report, but I do want to make sure to thank the counseling staff, as well as Marina and the Family Resource Center for all of their hard work and for putting an extra long day to spend it with the committee.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ortiz. Vice Chair Gould?
Thank you. I unfortunately missed the Chamber of Commerce meeting this morning, so I apologize to Emily Jenkins and crew, but Regan Davis was there, so represented. I was at the V S B A legislative, which I don't know if you'll be updating us on that, or if that's an updatable meeting. And then Chair Downs and I attended office hours, and we had a family come from, talk about the difficulties of learning about the system and navigating the secondary experience. They were not native born to the U.S. So, and it wasn't an English translation issue, it was just more of a cultural issue of how high schools are organized, the number of acronyms, the number of meetings, the number of systems, and just, and wondered how it could be better organized and communicated upon talking with this family, the mother and the, the student attended. I think it turned out Chair Downs and I actually learned more about, from this parent, about what's going on. They're actually very well informed. And we informed them that this is, you're doing very well with navigating the system. But it was great. It was good, good feedback. They gave us some good ideas. So, so yeah, that was our office hours.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gould. A couple of updates from me. We, Dr. Noonan and I attended the PEAK meeting a couple of weeks ago. And some of the topics on the agenda, we're looking at Virginia, the governor's been talking about pay increases, and Dr. Noonan has explained how, how that works with our local composite index and that. So we talked about that. Talked about gifted endorsements at Oak Street Elementary and clarifying the religious leave policy and how staff can take religious leave. Talked about just enhancing communication. One of the, I, I think, interesting topics we talked about was, so PEAK, what makes PEAK a little bit different in terms of, I guess, the scope of what we talk about is really, it's not supposed to be so much school-specific. So we have representatives from all across the spectrum, every, every, every school. And so we really try to keep that focused on things that are system-wide. And we had a good discussion about, you know, it seems like that is also a good place, that if there's a topic that comes up that affects more than one school, so it may not affect the whole system, but it does affect more than one school, that PEAK seems to be the appropriate way to address that. And I think we were all in agreement with that. So that was a good conversation. And the, the... all in agreement with that. So that was a good conversation. And the PEAK Advisory Committee made sure to, want to let the school board know that all of the teachers at all the different schools were very appreciative of us reaching out and holding the town halls regarding early release and start times. In terms of Falls Church Education Foundation, Dr. Noonan talked about super grants. The Education Foundation also gave out $40,000 in advanced teacher training grants. And as you, as we saw tonight, the number of our students who are financially at risk has increased. So the Falls Church Education Foundation has increased their budget from $35,000 to $60,000 for the Family Assistance Fund, and that's to support those students who have financial need. So just to remind the community again, you know, those fun events that we all go to run for the schools and the Home and Garden Tour, Little City Scramble, the Big Gala at the end of the year, those are all things that raise money for the Education Foundation, and those go to training teachers and teacher grants. But, you know, in my opinion, most importantly, supporting our families who need that financial assistance. And then two-
Chair Downs?
Yes.
I think they gave away $200,000 last night.
Wow.
I think that was the high watermark from the foundation. Absolutely.
Yep. Ms. Sharp's clapping, yeah.
Yeah, it's huge.
It's amazing. It's amazing. So, again, it's, it just, you know, that's something that the Education Foundation, a couple years ago, the social workers used to try to raise money, and the Education Foundation was happy to step in and help with that. So, again, just really incredible that the support we get from the Education Foundation for our teachers and our families. And thanks to Suzanne Ladakie, and, who's our new executive director, and then Debbie Hiscock before her, but we're just really great, really thankful for that great partnership. As Vice Chair Gould mentioned and Ms. Silverman mentioned, we were at the legislative breakfast this morning with Arlington Public Schools and Alexandria City Schools, and we're actually, we'll have a work session on that next meeting, is that right, Dr. Noonan, to talk more about our legislative package?
Correct.
But it was a very interesting meeting, you know, the three systems. And so the point of this is that we talk about what our priorities are as school systems, and how we want to talk to the lawmakers in Richmond, and really try to be advocates for the positions that we hold. And so, we had a good discussion with, we had, Ms. Minson was also there, we had the attorneys in the room, we had our lobbyists in the room, we had superintendents and school board chairs, and so, and then also our, and Patrick Fineran was there, as Ms. Silverman said. And so anyway, it was a very interesting, you know, our three school systems, I think, think very similarly, but even Dr. Noonan and I were looking at some of the ideas that Arlington had for their legislative package, and thought there were a couple things that were interesting that we might want to discuss at the next meeting. One, talked about how we teach history. We thought that was an interesting one. And so, so we'll be having a draft, another draft that we'll talk about at the work session, and then with final, with voting on that in December. And then, finally, I, as I mentioned three times now, I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee, and again, Ms. Sharp gave a great presentation on things that she's going to be looking at to do, to improve the website, and was really great utilizing the Special Education Committee and what, you know, what we can do here and there to really make the website more user-friendly and help parents as they navigate through the complicated process. And we looked at some statistics, and, which I found very interesting in terms of, you know, I think we're still seeing some effects from COVID, especially with our younger learners and the number of students who have had to have IEPs. And the, some of the things that the committee members talked about where they're really concerned about, and this sort of came into play where, when we were talking about early release Wednesday, but they're very concerned about teacher burnout with special education teachers. And, so that's something that they, that is on their mind, and kind of, that kind of went into the early release piece of it as a way of, you know, preventing burnout. But they also talked about, interestingly, advocating for more help from Ms. Sharp in central office, that there's, as these, we see these numbers increasing, and just giving, Ms. Sharp runs a, it's a very lean group over there, and so maybe, I think that you're going to be seeing some advocacy from them to give her some more assistance. And that's it for me. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. While the daycare advisory board did not meet yesterday due to various scheduling conflicts with the members, I was able to do the shadow days, like many of the other board members. I was, had the pleasure of hanging out with Ms. Silverman for a lot of the day. But one thing I wanted to highlight from that is that I got to shadow the transportation, transportation department in the morning, and I got to talk to Regina Anderson for a while, and how committed she is to the safe transport of children. And then I got to go on a bus route for Mount Daniel. And she and the bus driver mentioned that the students in Falls Church were the most polite students that they have interacted with, and I think Ms. Anderson, funnily enough, my last name, Regina said that I think she had driven in another district and had been in Fairfax, I believe. And so, having that commented on was quite nice. And I was also able to attend the fall party in Ms. Lauer's class at Oak Street, and she has a great class over there. We did salt art. It was quite fun.
Okay. Well, thank you again to Chair Downs for attending the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting for me. I was sorry to miss it. I did want to give yet one more shout out to Ms. Sharp, because the work she's doing on the parent education page is so exciting and fantastic. It's such, going to be such a great resource for our community. And I also wanted to mention that there is a post-secondary transition event on the sixteenth, that I'm sure has been, I know has been posted in the morning announcements, and in, I think in principal emails as well. The Health and Wellness Advisory Committee met last week, and they are, they hit the ground running. They have several groups working with some breakout initiatives, building on some of the success they had last year in some different models of engaging the community, and they were very successful in using, having secondary students engage with middle school, or high school students engage with middle school students on some various topics. That was very successful. So they're working on some of those programs as well, which I think is pretty cool. And then the Advisory Board for Recreation and Parks met. They're still working on the Fellow's Property and the project that will be happening across from Oak Street, and trying to brainstorm some ways for, including the schools' community in that, in that project, which I think would be really cool. I was encouraging them to maybe engage the students in helping name the park, or maybe some public art in the park, or we'll see. So that, that is still in the infancy stage in terms of incorporating the school community, but there's some cool potential there. And then the student liaisons are starting a clean air initiative for our parks, and it was interesting that that topic came up in terms of discouraging, we can't outright ban smoking in our parks, but discouraging smoking and vaping in our parks, which was interesting that that came up as a topic. It also came up with health and wellness in terms of the smoking and vaping with the secondary community as well, and some advocacy that the students and parents wanted to do in educating the community about that. So, I was encouraging them to maybe work together. So we'll see what comes of that.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Okay, any other, oh, Dr. Dimick, I'm sorry. My computer screen keeps blocking you out. I'm sorry, I'm not forgetting.
No worries. From attending the library board, the usage of our library keeps going up. I also went to the, I attended the Choral Boosters meeting. There are some concerts coming up. It's, the holiday season will soon be starting, so the Oak Streets concert is the sixth of December, and then the other ones follow the thirteenth and the fourteenth, but I'll mention those at our next school board meeting. Be on the lookout for singers at other holiday events. And then, a number of our students at Henderson and Meridian qualified for district chorus, and we had a couple of students who earned the highest score they could earn. So, more news on Choral Boosters next month.
Thank you very much. And I think, aren't we going to have, speaking of music, aren't we going to have some Meridian students at the VSPA? Is that right?
Yes. The Meridian Jazz Band will be performing for the Virginia School Board Association on Friday morning during breakfast, I believe.
Great, thank you. That's a good reason for us all to stay a second night. So, yeah, so just so the community knows, the, most of the school board will be headed down to Williamsburg tomorrow for our State School Board Association meeting, the Virginia School Board Association meeting. So, yeah, we're looking forward to hearing from the Meridian Jazz Band. That's quite an honor, so that's really going to be fun. Okay, so we're going to move on now to twelve, Section 12 Approval of Minutes. And Ms. Goodell sent out the minutes to everyone of November 15th, 2022, and December 13th, 2022. Assuming everyone's had a chance to read those, and I'd like to ask for unanimous consent, and seeing no objections, those minutes are approved. And if you see now, at Section 13 FCCPS enrollment, that's for the board review, and we're not going to go into a second closed meeting, and from there, we'll adjourn the meeting. So, this will be the end of the public portion of the meeting. And we are at four point, so thank you all, for those of you who tuned in tonight to watch the meeting. And we're going to be moving into a second closed meeting. So we're at 4.01. If someone could read us into closed.
I can.
Yes, Ms. Silverman?
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter. Legal matters under Section 2.2-3711A8, in particular, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Could I have a second? Thank you, Dr. Anderson. All those in favor say yes. Yes. All those opposed say no. Thank you. We'll be moving into closed.
And Dr. Dimick, I've sent you a link for Sec Closed.
Okay. And thank you all for joining us tonight. Have a good evening.